So hello, this is the, we will now call to order actually, the joint meeting, special meeting between the Fairfax Town Council and the Fairfax Planning Commission. Welcome you all and members of the public who are able to join us tonight. So we're calling that meeting to order and Michelle, Ms. Town, Ms. Town Clerk, if you would please do a roll call of both, both the Council on Planning Commission.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll start with the Town Council. Councilmember Cutrone.
Present.
Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Here.
And Mayor Ackerman.
I am here as well.
All present. And now for the Planning Commissioners, Chair Newton.
Here.
I believe Vice Chair Fagoso.
Here.
Commissioner Green. Commissioner Swift.
Here.
Commissioner Parba Gonzalez. She is not here, absent. Commissioner Jansen.
Here.
And Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Thank you. All, you have a quorum, one absent.
Okay. Thank you. So we can begin by reading the land acknowledgement. I'll, I'll go ahead and read that. Unless, would you like to read it? Chair Newton of the Planning Commission. You're on.
Now, please go ahead, Mayor Ackerman.
Okay, all right. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. And we have a meeting protocol that by decision quite some time ago, we continue to remind the, the community of it and ourselves at the meetings. The mayor shall maintain order at these meetings. The council and audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain standards of tolerance and civility. The council, well, the 10:00 PM and 11:30 PM rule doesn't really apply tonight. And I'll just explain quickly that we have, after this meeting, this joint meeting of the council and the planning commission, we have a special meeting of the council, which should be very short because it has two items on consent and that's it. But that's scheduled for 9:30 and just because legally it was posted as happening at 9:30, we will need to adjourn this meeting and have that meeting at 9:30. So just consulting a moment ago with, with our legal counsel, if we are not finished by what, by 9:30 with the business in this meeting, the advice we've been given is that we should adjourn this joint meeting so that we can have that meeting on time. Hopefully it'll be quick and then come back to this meeting. However, maybe we'll be finished by that time. Okay, so we just have one item on the agenda and I will turn it over. I believe we'll start with our planning director, Ben Berto, to introduce that item.
Mayor, excuse me, I had a very brief announcement.
I forgot. Yes, go ahead.
So I had requested that we bring the Urgency Eviction Moratorium to this meeting to extend it through December 31st, 2021. It expires at the end of September. After our council did some research, it turned out that the governor signed a bill, AB 832, which took effect on June 28th of this year, which actually prohibits any jurisdiction from continuing eviction moratoriums. But I will remind folks, so that's why it's not on this agenda or the following agenda. I will remind folks that there is rental assistance that the county is distributing from state and federal money. So if you need rental assistance, I believe we have that information in our newsletter. Please check into that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Kohler. Okay, planning director, Berto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council and members of the Planning Commission, and indeed, everybody who's in attendance tonight. Staff and the consultants have been working hard on this project since early, early this year. We've had 14 meetings since EMC Planning Group, our consultants were hired in April. I know there's been some comments that it doesn't feel like a normal process. And I guess I would ask, what does these days? We have had some in-person events, farmer's market, the Fairfax Picknick last Saturday, the food pantry, and a lot of person-to-person meetings. And I hope we will be able to go to in-person meetings at some point in the not-too-distant future. And until then, I appreciate people participating in this mode and continue to do so. An important part of our efforts to engage the public is fairfaitspeaks.com. We've had over 1,000 visits to that website that has been created specifically for the housing element. We want to get more visits and in particular, more registered and active users. And I think what you'll see out of tonight's presentation is some pretty exciting opportunities for public interaction on that, on that site. I would also note that fairfaitspeaks.com is the central information point where, where things are gathered. So if you have questions about the housing element, please go to that site. And if you still have questions, contact us. In terms of tonight's meeting, this is a really important status update and check-in with the Town Council, the Planning Commission, and you, the public. I'm really excited about the profile that this type of a meeting affords. We know that we have to get widespread public participation for this to be as successful as possible. And I would encourage everybody who is here tonight with an earshot to spread the word and let everybody know about this going on. We will have ongoing meetings and, and we want your participation. I would also note something that we worked on today is there was a small error in the map that went out with the staff report that was posted online. And that is that the Deer Park school site was listed instead of the Deer Park villa site. That has been corrected on materials that are posted online. And so we apologize for that error. Without further ado, some of you have already met him. Andy Flower is the lead planner from EMC Planning, working on this project. And here's, he's here to take this presentation the rest of the way. I however, of course, will be available for all questions. Andy, take it away.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Mayor, council members and planning commissioners. It's wonderful to see all of you today and of course, the public. Thank you for, for taking the time to learn more about the process. And if you're new to the process, we want to welcome you and let you know that you're entering at just the right time. You're not late. We've just gotten started. We want to make it very clear that we don't, we don't pretend to have all of the answers. We have a lot of questions for everyone today. And we also have the ability to answer some questions that you might have. So as Ben mentioned, fairfaitspeaks.com, that's our website. That's a great place to learn more information and to share more information. So without further ado, Mayor Ackerman, if I may begin the presentation. It looks like I'm disabled for presenting.
Our town clerk who would have the ability to set that up.
I, I am just trying to fix that, sorry. I thought I had enabled you to share your screen.
Very good.
Let me see. And it's not, it's, it's, can you tell me what it's telling you?
It's telling me host disabled participant screen sharing.
I am very sorry.
No worries.
I'm not seeing where I can change that for you.
Um.
I'm going to make you a co-host and see if that helps.
Okay.
Do you?
Yes, that, that definitely helped. That did it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Sorry for that.
No worries at all. Thank you for working with me. Creative solutions, that's what we're all here for. And just as a reminder to everybody, we're, what we're talking about today is progress and next steps for the town of Fairfax, sixth cycle housing element update. And this, this update is required by state law. If you're new to the process, that may be new information. And the deadline is, is December of, of next year. We're getting busy now with site options because we'll, we'll need that amount of time to work through with you, a full, complete understanding of which sites to move forward with. So today's agenda, we're going to look at the importance of equity for this cycle of housing update, which the state laws, AB 686, also known as affirmatively furthering fair housing. We're also going to have an introduction to the Balancing Act tool, which is part of our next steps for community engagement. And it's pretty exciting. We then have a public outreach and engagement update and a site analysis approach. We're mindful, Mayor Ackerman, of your 9:30 hard deadline for this evening. So we'll try to be brief but thorough. Just a quick recap of what our numbers have been allotted to the town of Fairfax. So while there is a total of 490 units, you can see that the, the combined very low income and low income account for about 47% of that number. So we'll be needing to find, find places for that level of, of housing need. And for tonight's meeting, we want to keep in mind the, these five requests for feedback that we have for all the decision makers at the meeting this evening. Factors for analysis of potential housing sites, how to incorporate missing middle housing, ways to affirmatively further fair housing, comments on the draft housing sites list and map, and strategies for encouraging and expanding public participation. So we'll begin with the importance of equity. New legislation, the AB 686, as I just mentioned, there's a whole new section of the housing element that needs to be added and that in its defined as meaningful actions. So in addition to combating discrimination, we need to help overcome patterns of segregation and foster, foster inclusive community free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. This, this will, we will be supported in this effort by Veronica Tam, who has been hired by the county to assist in research and reviewing our, our, our steps to bridge between that research and our meaningful actions that we propose. And I want to mention that we fully acknowledge that Fairfax is a leader in the region for several efforts, including anti-discrimination, mediation for rent increase, and just cause evictions. I also want to mention that October 20th, at the council meeting, Liz Darby from the council, or excuse me, Liz Darby from the county will be coming to speak on this topic a little more deeply. Today, we're just touching on it. We were hoping she could come this evening, but they are having a presentation for the county this evening. So the goals for affordable, or excuse me, the goals for affirmatively furthering fair housing include these: to address significant disparities in housing needs and access to opportunity, replace segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns, to transform racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity, and to foster and maintain compliance with civil rights and fair housing laws. So these will be, again, the factors that we will be focused on through our research and through discovering the meaningful actions that we want to propose for Fairfax. And just quickly, our, our research has shown that those cities in Southern California who needed, who had a deadline more recently than, than the deadline for Fairfax for certification, the, the most common comment we've seen from HCD has been that there's a disconnect between the meaningful actions and the research and understanding for equity. So this is a very strong component. We take it very seriously and we will be considering it as a lens for all decisions that are made throughout this process. And moving on to public outreach, we want to thank everybody who has been part of the more than 1,000 visits to our site. We've got more than, we've got more than 100 site registrations and 117 activated participants. We're hoping to more than double this in our next phase as we bring about a more robust, interactive tool that now that we have our site options initiated in very draft sketch form, we know that we haven't gotten them all and we know that some of them that are on our list right now might not end up on the final list. So that's where we look to the community and to the decision makers to bring, bring about some creative ideas. And, and just as an example of what we have on our website right now, this is a poll that helps us understand what, what is the pulse of, of, we've only had 48 people participate in this particular poll, but you can see here that we have a number of people who are concerned that, with our process, that maybe the housing won't actually get built. And that, I can say, is another part of the, the state's requirements with this sixth round is that if we're choosing a site that has been chosen in the past for a fourth or fifth, or maybe both fourth and fifth cycle housing element update, then there's a requirement for a deeper due diligence for helping, helping it to come into reality for this next eight-year cycle. So with that, I would like to, at, at this moment, interrupt the slideshow for a quick demonstration and to wake everybody up and get you excited about our next step in our housing outreach. And I'm not sure if I see within the panel here, we have Chris Adams. And I see that Amy Flynn has raised her hand, who is from the Balancing Act. So if, if.
I could, yes. Would you like me to help you?
Yes, we need for Chris Adams and Amy Flynn to be excellent. There's Amy.
Okay. And Chris Adams, do you see him on the list?
Amy, will it just be you this evening or will, does Chris need to also be elevated to?
So this is Chris.
With Amy.
And Andy said Amy. Sorry, we, we set up our master name on that, so.
If you could take it away and, and give us a, a brief introduction to the tool, Balancing Act, and, and help us understand how, how this tool can maybe be a, a strong factor in direct democracy happening with our, with our housing element update process. Are you having the issue I had? Are you having difficulty being able to share your screen, Chris?
Um, this is Michelle, the town clerk again. I just promoted one of the Amy's two panelists so that I don't see him on here.
Okay, I see that Chris just changed his name.
There, here he comes.
Yes, excellence. Good to see you. Everyone, I'd like to introduce Chris Adams. He's from the Balancing Act software company. And they've done incredible things for newer cities. And I'll let him describe it from here, but it did begin as a budget balancing program.
Right. Okay, thank you very much, Andy and, and Ben. It's, it's nice to be here. And we are a small company, but it just so happens that one of our staff people actually lives about 70 feet from, from Fairfax over in San Antonio. Okay, so Andy, I'm going to really stick to what you'd asked me. Oh, my screen sharing is disabled.
Okay, and I'm going to make you a co-host so that you.
Okay.
Can share your screen.
You know, the same thing happened to me. I think Zoom must have changed things. It used to be that you could be a presenter and be able to present, but now it seems like you have to be a co-host, so. Okay, here we go. So there is lots and lots I could talk to you about, but I'm going to, Ben and, and Andy have been really helpful in terms of being very specific about what they think would be most useful at this point. So I'm really just going to give you four examples that sort of illustrate a simulation that's intended to help with sort of a different pain point in the, the process of engaging the public on housing element. And, and Andy or Ben, I can, you know, I can dial up additional examples or I can, you know, share experiences from other jurisdictions if useful. But right now, I'm just going to focus on, on the four, as you suggested. And we can either stop at that or we can go a little bit further if you wish. Sound good?
Sounds good. Thank you.
So just a quick bit of background on this. We've been, we're a company that mostly did, previously had, had focused on doing budget engagements, budget simulations to help public leaders communicate and get informed input on the budget. And then we were approached unexpectedly about a year ago from Elk Grove, California, saying, you know what, I think that the RENA challenge, the way that it's, it's expressing itself in the public engagement component actually has a lot of similarities. And so we worked with them and a very good leader up in Elk Grove. We made some modifications to our simulation and I think we had a great deal of success. Fast forwarding about eight months, the city of Lafayette or the town of Lafayette, I'm not sure if it's a town or city of Lafayette, but just over in Contra Costa County, they also wanted to use our tool. And in working with them, we, you know, had a very creative process and came up with this idea of adding a map. And so it illustrates two different types of uses for the simulation. I'm going to show you both. Because it's, it's relatively local to you, I'm going to show you Lafayette first. So once again, this, this tool will fit very nicely into what you're doing already with your, with your engagement site, the Bang the Table site. And this can be dropped right in. It's a process called an iframe, if you're familiar with, with that term. And then it gets sort of nested and embedded and it's, it's actually a very nice interface. If you wish, you can put in explanatory material. A lot of folks have been making explanatory videos, which I think is really useful. There's a secondary modal which you can use either to ask questions, which, you know, you may or may not want to do in Balancing Act. You may want to do that over in Bang the Table, but you can just provide some additional explanation. And so then, once you get into the simulation, they provide a little bit of explanation, but I'm just going to go ahead and do that live. But when you open it up, you, the, the most prominent piece is, is this red bar and we call this, this the balance bar. And then there's just a blanket statement that says you do not have a housing plan. And so the idea here is that you are, at least Lafayette, needed to find 2026 units. You guys have fewer than that, but you're also a smaller locale. And then, and then to essentially get to the point where you've met that challenge or exceeded it. The second element is a map. It's an interactive map. And this is the part that Lafayette was really critical in helping us to develop. It's actually, I think, a really powerful way of, of engaging people in a meaningful way in, in understanding these housing elements. And then on the left beneath that is, are the units. So this is essentially the, the need that's been expressed. And so the RENA is, in this case, is, is expressed here as a fixed amount that is really not up for debate. I know that there's some folks that are challenging that, but at least for this exercise, they chose to lock it. And then they use, we have a number of ways that we can add explanatory information. And so they've used this info icon to, to just describe briefly what the RENA, RENA is. But they could have also added additional explanation, another window or a movie or something like that if they would wish to. And then beneath that is the buffer. And so this is something that is, you know, there's, there's a fair amount of discretion about this in terms of how much, you know, you should, you should overplan. And by default, they've set it at 50%, but as you can see, they can change that pretty substantially. And, you know, getting public input on what they think a reasonable buffer should be. They want to leave it at their default. And then you go over to the map or you can go to the map where you can go down here and you can start to interact. And so the, the next simulation I'm going to show you is looking at parcels. This one is actually looking at areas to focus density on. And so if we go to area one here, west end, north of Diablo Boulevard, let me just scroll, scroll this back up, and it says 35 dwelling units per acre. And so currently, it's got 139. And so if you were to increase that, it goes up, I think, by five per click. You see what those new units are that are being added. And you also see that this area is darkening. So you can see that, you know, you're really putting some density there. And then you're also reducing this number, so you're getting closer to that balance point. Same thing if you were to go to area nine. It allows you to, to increase at area nine, it goes up, it's, it, the, it moves much more quickly. Each click adds about 80 or so housing units. You can actually get to that middle point fairly quickly. And then the, the key, and this is where the similarity is between trying to balance a budget and to meet a RENA goal, is that in order to submit, the user has to do the same thing that you have to do. I mean, it's a really nice way of almost providing, you know, some empathy in terms of, of public engagement. They have to actually balance the, the, meet the RENA requirement or balance the budget, to use other terms. And so if I make this last click, this is now turned green and it says you have a housing plan and then you'd be free to submit. I'm not going to do that. And it just, it just takes you to a little summary page. And then they also want people to know that, you know, this is what, you know, Des Moines looks like. And it's not, you know, ugly necessarily, but this is just some examples. So this has been, this, this launched in about, I think, April of 2021. And we just did a webinar today, actually, with the city of Lafayette. And they said that their next step is that they're going to use sort of that, that, that next purpose that we were talking about, where you're looking at parcels. So they're using it in an iterative, iterative fashion. So let me show you Elk Grove. Elk Grove was, as I said, the, the original. And so they, when, when we launched with them a year ago, they did, we did not have the map, but they, you know, they, they still may do just fine. They actually divided their, on the need side, it's actually very similar to Lafayette. And then, but on the, the opportunity side or on the allocation side, they've added additional info icons just to let people know, you know, what this district is. They chose to use the, the political districts, the council districts. When you click on that, it comes up with a map that shows you what that district is. And then when you open it, it actually has parcels. And so you can go through and you can say, yes, you know, let's, let's rezone site E15 and that gets you 13. You can do C4 and that gets you 184. C10 gets you 174, et cetera. And then you, and as I said, they divided it by council districts. One thing that I just wanted to point out is that, you know, there's, there's a lot of nuance in how you can, you know, sort of create these interaction points. You can use that plus minus like Lafayette did. You can use yes, no, which is sort of another way of saying include, don't include. You can show some sites as being, you know, not possible to, to make any changes to. And then you can also show some that, you know, may or may not be in the mix, but you can, you know, you, you may want to presumptively leave them out, but you can sort of make a placeholder for them if you want. And so there's, there's a number of different ways you can configure this. And as I said earlier, we've been doing budget simulations for about six years. And so we've come up with a lot of ways, we call them the three Cs, to show constraints, consequences, and context. And so on the backend, we try to keep it as simple as possible, but it, you know, we also want to be able to, you know, accommodate the complexity that you have. Now then, the, the next step from this, I'm just going to take you down to Southern California now, is Eastville, California. And they, once again, did a really nice little video just to kind of explain what's going on. They used our map feature, our drop a pin. So occasionally, it's, well, not occasionally, very often, it's, it's useful to know where people live when they provide input. And most people don't like giving their address. And so I don't know, does anybody, can anybody who's not on mute give me the zip code for Fairfax?
Nine. Nine four nine three zero.
Nine four nine three zero. And so if, if people give you the zip code, and generally people will do that, it pulls up a map and then it gives you the opportunity, if you want, to say, you know what, if you wouldn't mind, could you just maybe drop a pin, you know, about where you live? You don't have to give us your address, but if you just give us a little bit more sense, that would be useful. And then on the backend, we give you a heat map that shows where everybody lives. And I know Fairfax is a, is a smallish place, but you can turn this feature on or off as you wish. Okay, then Eastville, they actually created an infographic because they wanted to make sure people understood what was going on. So just, you know, kind of what I did verbally for you a few minutes ago. But then when you go down. But then when you go down, Eastvale has, you know, a problem of a lot of California cities, is that they're mostly built out. And so they, and they wanted to be able to demonstrate that through this process, but also to convey to residents that, you know, what we have, we have to come up with a solution. It's state law, it's a requirement. And so this is a map of Eastvale. And instead of having the zones, they actually have parcels. And so you can click on, you know, area one here, and you can say how many units should be on the site. Let me just pull that back up. And so right now, it's eight dwelling units per acre, and it tells a little bit about that. And so if you increase it, it goes up, I think, by five with each click, and then it gets darker and darker. And I think if you go a certain amount, it actually stops you. I'm trying to remember how we set this one up or how they set it up. Maybe not. I'm trying to remember. But then they've got the various options down here as well. And one of them does actually stop you. So anyway, that's the general idea. And then the other thing that Andy and Bennett asked me to share, we have this feature that I think is, it's one of our best features, but it's not really used very much by our clients. It's called an impact feature. And so, you know, very often in a public decision, more than one thing happens, whether it's, you know, balancing a budget or whether or not it's, you know, choosing, you're making some tough choices regarding the housing element. And so, and we actually developed this feature for to illustrate the impacts of investments in climate change. So how much mitigation, how many greenhouse gases might you prevent from being emitted if you were to make certain investments in mitigation? But it's a flexible enough tool that you can use it for other things as well. So in this case, I've configured it to show, okay, if we're making some improvements, or some choices here that would help to, you know, provide overall housing, which of these are actually affordable? And so I've, you know, done a little bit to define affordable. I know that's a pretty tricky thing to do sometimes. But I'm just saying that the state requires that, you know, maybe 100 of new housing units be considered affordable. In your case, it sounds like it's around 240. So you could actually set that as a target. And then you can configure whichever, you know, if there are some of these choices that do have an equity impact, you can configure it to actually show how many of those items would actually be affordable. There's another way, you could actually do equity. This particular example that I've got live right now, Andy, shows affordable housing units, because I think is pretty useful. But you could also, if you had some way of measuring equity, you could do the same thing. But let me show you what happens. So if you go down here and you click on this, I've set this one up with a 20% multiplier. So as it goes up five right here, you get five that gets added to the total, and then 20% or one of those gets added up here. So each click gives you one up here, and then five over here. And so that you can actually, you know, make some judgments about, you know, are you actually making affordable housing? You can do the same thing and use it with the scenario questions. So in this case, I just made this up, you know, the ARCO site should be included. And if you say I want to allow, you know, four duplexes and four housing units, in this case, I set the multiplier at 50%, so half of those are affordable. And then down here, three-story apartment building, 28 units, and I set this up so that 14 of those would be affordable. So I'm going to stop there because that was all I was asked to present, but I'd be glad to chat a little bit more if you want, or just let you get on with your business.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a tool that is not on the Fairfax Speaks website at the moment, but soon will be.
That's correct. And tonight's conversation is leading towards this. So that's, that's part of why it's appropriate to have this demonstration now, so that everybody can start to envision where we're headed. This is part of the reason why we're looking at so many potential units. Because in order to have people select something that's close to 490, we need to be looking at many more than that, so that everybody, so that when you're using the tool, you don't end up having to say yes to everything that's made available as optional. So we're thrilled to have Chris Adams present today. This isn't something he does with every community that he works with. And I want to respect his time and make sure that he's available right now for any decision-maker questions or comments, or any ideas that you might have.
If I can just say that a question I'd like to just get clear on right now is what, as we move to the public comment part of this evening, I'm wondering what in particular, and you just mentioned one thing, Andy, you're looking for possibly other options for opportunity sites, so that there can be enough of them that there's choices to be made among them using a tool like this and then decision-making. But besides that, what in particular are you looking for in terms of information tonight?
Well, just going back to that, to the staff report, the five things that we're hoping that you'll sort of, our request for feedback. But specifically regarding Chris Adams and his interaction at this moment, if there are any questions that possibly he is being an expert for this tool, that, and I see, I saw two council members' hands up. Now I see one. I see two again. So maybe we can begin to answer any questions that they might have.
Mr. Mayor? This is Adam. Can I, can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think it's really important because we kind of jumped into the middle of a discussion, and I know that Andy has a full presentation. I think it's really important that Andy starts with where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. I think what we're talking about now is where we're going. And I think there's an opportunity in October to revisit this part of it or through Fairfax Speed. So I would really like the presentation to go through and then focus on those five questions that are for the council and the planning commission.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Goddard, your hand is up. Is, should you, do you want to jump in with a question right now? Or continue with the presentation and hear the rest before we?
If I may, just a quick, quick question. Just wanted to hear, as this is a new tool, what the initial reaction from the, some of the piloting communities has been?
Sure. So it's, it's not, it's an established tool that's being put to new uses. So we work with about 150 cities and counties and governments around the world, including, you know, very large ones like San Jose and San Diego. But we have now used it with five for housing, and then we're about to add 25, and one fell swoop through a special bulk purchasing license that A-BAG is making for some of its members. If you'd like, I can show you the comments from Christopher Jordan. He's the planning director at Elk Grove. He's an experienced planning director. He's gone through six or eight housing elements. And, you know, he's the one that sort of saw the potential for using a tool that had been created for budgets for the RENA allocation. And he says it made sense to borrow from a financial tool because of the concept of balance. The goal was to help residents understand this system. I think so often, housing elements attract people who have very strong feelings about, you know, one specific thing or one specific parcel, and they don't often see that you're actually trying to solve a larger problem. But respecting that, the second bullet point, he said, you know, residents could still go in and be against a site, but they couldn't just be against the site. That they had to actually, you know, in some ways, you know, sit in your shoes and actually, you know, consider how to solve the problem. And they said that the biggest complaint was that the simulation was set up so that you could not submit an incomplete plan. And that was really by design. He, you know, he wanted to set this up in such a way that people would be completely free to complete, you know, to express themselves, express their opinion. But, you know, you also have to help, you have to be accountable in some ways to solve the problem. And, you know, somebody who's done public engagement for 25 years, this is one of the main problems with public engagement, is that people just think too narrowly, and they don't actually think about how to solve the problem. In terms of just the upside of this, you know, every single site got at least 55% support. And, you know, once again, that's probably, you know, a feature of the scarcity of sites. I mean, you guys are being asked by the state of California to find a lot of housing where there's not, you know, that many obvious places to put it. So when people actually solved the problem, 50%, 55% were, at least 55% were supported. And then what they were really happy about was they were able to make recommendations to the planning commission of sites that had no less than 65%. They actually, he felt very, very good about that. And then just his overall quote was, this was the easiest housing element process I've ever done. And given the allocations in this RENA challenge and this planning round, I think that's a pretty powerful statement.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I appreciate your sharing that.
Yeah, you bet.
And Councilmember Kohler, I think you had your hand up next, and then?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, maybe one of the things, I think we should listen to what our interim town manager suggested. We could spend a whole lot of time talking about this tool, and I really think we have a lot to discuss about the potential sites. And I would just, you know, urge that we go through the presentation. And if there needs to be follow-up with Balancing Act, I think Amy Flynn lives nearby. But I think we really need to get to the meat of what we're doing, because I know I could probably ask a whole lot of software questions, and we'd be off track. So just a thought, and thank you very much.
Okay, and Commissioner Fergoso, if you have something that you think needs to be addressed right now before we complete the presentation?
No, actually, Mr. Mayor, I was just also in agreement with Councilwoman Kohler that we move forward and not get lost in the minutia.
Let's do that. So whoever's next on the presentation, thank you, Chris.
Yep, you bet. I'm gonna take my leave now, but Amy Flynn is on the call. I don't think she's able to talk, but she can, if you need any help connecting the tool and the process to the place, she's a terrific person to do that.
Great, thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
So who's up? Andy, are you taking it from here?
I am. I'm continuing the presentation. Yes, just for a quick update with engagement. Like Ben mentioned, we've had 14 meetings so far, and that's not including the special meetings that we had with David Smedbeck from Chamber of Commerce and Mark Brown from Marin Wildlife Prevention Authority, wildfire prevention authority, excuse me. And we've had wonderful feedback at the Food Pantry, Farmers Market, and the Picnic Festival just this last weekend, where we're really learning about the full spectrum of comments that, and positions that people have, and oftentimes also experiencing sort of an arc of understanding. So in a very brief conversation, we can help folks understand where we're at with the housing element. And, and people seem excited to, or at least willing to engage with us with this next phase of our process, which is perfect timing, because this is where we, we need to hear from people. We, we need to hear people's ideas and people's comments. And we are, we are expanding our outreach on our website within this next month and a half. And at the end of that month and a half is when we'll have the Balancing Act tool. And in order for that Balancing Act tools to work, we need our site analysis to have brought us to a map that we feel confident going forward with. So the guidance that we received early on was that everything is on the table. In other words, all properties are up for consideration and policies. And we're beginning with the properties, and we're staying open to considering policies as well. So in contribution to the evaluation process, we started with the constraints map, so certainly environmental constraints. And, and most specifically evacuation maps and understanding where the structures with one exit route exist, and trying to avoid those as we move forward and think about, think about potential sites. We also brought in all prior opportunity sites. It is important to understand that HCD's requirements for this round is for any site that's been used in the past, there needs to be extra due diligence for expanding the possibility that it, that something may actually be developed in that, in that locate, in those locations within this next eight-year cycle. Of course, we're looking at zoning map and considering what, where zoning might need to be altered in order for a site to be truly feasible for the kind of development that would be most appropriate for a site. And Ben is leading the planning commission through review of the objective design and development standards. The acronym for that is ODS, just in case anyone hears that spoken offhandedly. That's what that is. And of course, public comments is a high priority for us in integrating through this process. And we've initiated our housing element draft, and through that, we've looked through that lens to consider site options in preparation for our housing element. Once we get closer with our site options, we'll then be reviewing again suggestions for the safety element and doing a deeper dive before we then make it public and request public comments on that as well. So as I mentioned, we started our analysis approach by considering evacuation and safety concerns and including fire and flood analysis. Now, flood analysis has been less of a factor in excluding sites as much as the evacuation, the one way and one way out. And that's in part because HCD recognizes how some sites can mitigate for some amount of flood. So as we move closer to our, to our final steps in the process, we'll be taking into consideration the actualities and the specificity of, for instance, this is a FEMA flood map. So missing middle housing concepts, that might be new to some folks in the audience. Others have maybe been looking at this pretty closely. We have participated in some webinars by Opticos, the same firm that's working on the objective design and development standards right now for all of the communities in Marin County. And one of the concepts that they bring forward is the difference between house-scale buildings and block-scale buildings. So as you can see in this image, this graphic from their webinar, mid-rise is sort of at that block scale. And of course, we all know that single-family homes are considered at the house scale. So the missing middle, the quick read on what that means is it's that concept of having house-scale buildings with the ability for multiple units. And then, of course, the preference would be in walkable neighborhoods or areas near transit. So the goal is to have a more cohesive and vibrant community. And here, we've got just a couple of slides with some samples of microhousing and what that might be like. Interior tiny homes, which haven't been written into the town of Fairfax zoning, but could be. That could be something that gets more encouraged through policy, as an example. Eco-village ideas, that's something that's been popular through some of the meetings that we've presented at. And this, of course, one of the challenges for this, they often need a larger site. So in thinking about where an eco-village might be possible, it might be necessary to consider some sites that are, that are larger in our, in our map, maybe a little beyond the ones that we're starting with tonight. So here's a list of the sites that we're starting with. And of course, this has been included as an attachment to the staff report and available for public consumption. We also, if we don't yet have it on our website, we will in the very near future. And, and so we can, we can come back to this and go site by site. I also wanted to include a zoning map excerpt in case our conversation goes that way. And just a reminder again of the key feedback from tonight's meeting, that our request of you is, is a check-in about the analysis, the factors that we're using for the potential housing sites, ideas about how to incorporate missing middle housing, ways to affirmatively further fair housing, comments on the draft housing sites list. list and map, and strategies for encouraging and expanding public participation.
Can you leave that last slide up for a second?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. So at this point, I'd like to open this up for council comments and direction or council questions. And then I suppose the next step would be to get public comments on this. So we're welcome to, or you're welcome to fire away.
All right, Norma, let's start with you. And then I saw Barbara's hand and Cindy's.
I'm sorry, I had my hand up from before. I'm not sure what we're doing now since you called on me.
Any, any questions of?
Questions of Andy at this time?
Presentation before we go to public, public.
No, thank you.
Okay, so Barbara.
Yeah, Andy, I think your zoning map that you showed is a zoning depiction from the prior housing element. So it's incorrect. For example, I think it's, it's things that we wanted to do, but we maybe didn't do. So I don't think all that CC is correct. I think that is still CH. So I just, would just urge you to, and I'm not an expert, but I remember when we tried to rezone that to CC. So I, I would just urge you to go back and check around what the current zoning is. Because I think some of the decisions we want to make, we need to know if we need to rezone, correct? And I have a couple of questions. And some of these I sent already. But first of all, I very much appreciate the table that you provided and you provided to us before. And you made some changes based on, at least I know, our discussion of affordable housing. But one of the things we might want to do before we post that on the website for Fairfax Speaks is safe for discussion purposes. Because that's what we're doing. We're saying everything's on the table. But, you know, we don't want people getting concerned if this isn't their mind. But just a question, I had sent several questions beforehand, which Ben responded to some. But when I look at St. Rita's on your list, it says it's PDD zoned. And clearly, I, I don't know all that we did, but I don't remember that. And some of the things have question marks about whether or not we need to rezone. So I think we would need to check on that. I know. And then CH, I believe there is something about that. But one question I have, for example, is CL. I believe you would have to get a conditional use permit to allow residential. Is that correct? And if that's correct, I think we should put something like that in the table, just to clarify some of those things. So anyway, that's just my only question. Is St. Rita's school actually, or St. Rita's church, that property zone PDB?
I can answer that. Yes, I mean, based on our zoning map and, and also Barbara, based on your prior comment, I think we'll have to go back to the attempted rezonings that occurred. I think the assumption is that we, our, our current zoning map is current, but per our current zoning map, it is zone PDD.
Okay, and just, I would just urge you to go back and check the zoning map to make sure we've got not what we planned, but maybe what, what is currently there, just so we know. But thank you. I, I, my other questions were answered earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So we have other hands. Cindy, yours was next.
Couple of questions. I've got some questions on Fairfax Speaks website, but I'm gonna save those for another time. But in the staff report, as far as the meetings with constituents and, and other agencies that you mentioned, you mentioned MMWD. And you mentioned that they were, it seems like there was a planning, county planning directors luncheon where perhaps there was a presentation, I'm not sure, on water in the county. Cause there was, in addition to MMWD, there was North Marin Water District there. My question related to water is, has staff met individually with MMWD to discuss you know, water infrastructure, supply capability specifically in relation to Fairfax, but also all of MMWD's serviced area? Or was the only communication with them at the planning director's luncheon? That's my first question.
Yes, Cindy, I'll respond to that. Yes, the communication with MMWD to date has been at that planning directors meeting where we were outlining, we, we were discussing with heads of those agencies the current status as this drought unfolds, you know, options for, for consideration to address that.
So is staff planning any additional meetings with MMWD?
We will continue to update our understanding of the water supply situation. Obviously, that's an important component as we develop this housing element. So yes.
Okay, then I had a question on the table. Can you explain on there, a couple of columns for me? One is the acres slash square feet. What that means? And then also the number of units. How did staff come up with the number of units on there? For example, thirty to seventy for Deer Park Villa, School Street Plaza, a hundred to a hundred and forty. And then my other question on there would be the purpose of putting White Hill School on there? As far as, you know, going forward, any kind of reasonable expectation for housing on that site? Thanks.
Thank you. Andy, if you could scroll, oh, that's not the entirety of that table. I don't know if we have that at the bottom end of the table. Okay, we might need to share screen. Unfortunately, that pertaining to your question about the acres versus square feet, I can explain it. Where we were talking about duplex and quadplexes, and let me get my numbers. Do you have that before you? And I apologize to the public for not having this, but basically item number fourteen, where we're talking about potential development of missing middle housing in the duplex to quadplex range. And as a member of the Planning Commission, Commissioner Swift, you are aware of those, we've had several discussions, the Planning Commission meetings where we discussed this, as well as in the Housing Element Subcommittee. And the context of the square footage listing for that type of housing was consistent with the Objective Design and Development Standards that the town has done so far that you could fit quadplexes on two different scenarios of lot size. The five thousand square foot lots and the seven thousand square foot lots. And indeed, one of the graphics that accompanied the staff report shows parcels in the five thousand and seven thousand square foot range for both currently single-family zone parcels and duplex zone parcels. And this is important because as we look at, for example, new state law SB nine, we're not going to go into that in detail tonight. But this potential for people to put duplexes, et cetera, on their parcels, the thinking in the work that Fairfax has done so far has been, well, if we are envisioning this type of missing middle housing, i.e. house-scale development with a greater number of units and smaller units, and that relates to your second question, that we need to be cognizant of what's appropriate on sites with the designs that Opticos has come up with. As you know, Opticos has done this general Objective Design and Development Standards work for the entire county. It's based on what the information they developed for the county. And that five thousand and seven thousand square foot size is within their design parameters for duplexes up to quadplexes. So we showed that in an effort to say, hey, there are hundreds of sites that, again, relating to the work that Fairfax has already done in terms of safety, where we've said, we don't want to be considering parcels that only have one way in or one way out. And we've already mapped that. We don't want to consider parcels that are severely constrained by slope. And as we know, many of the hilly areas in Fairfax are pretty tough in terms of vehicular access already. So we've integrated that into what's available on the square footage. For the remainder of the parcels, and that would be one through thirteen, because those acreages, some of them are only approximate based on the information that we've been able to develop. We just went on an acreage basis. So where you see the approximate signs, that may relate to the amount of detailed work we've been able to do so far. Or in some cases, where we're only potentially looking at a portion of the site. And that would be, for example, the White Hill School site and potentially the St. Rita's site. In terms of the number of units and how developed, this is consistent with this missing middle housing approach. Where, and this question was put to the commission in various other groups. And the idea is that in our current single-family zoning, you could build one house on certain lots anyway, up to thirty-five hundred square feet. Well, the idea is, gee, do we want to be building market rate houses for millionaires? Is that our focus? Or do we want to try to be providing affordable housing? And so this is where we, we got direction from your commission to explore this notion of duplex, quadplex, or even considering sixplexes on these lots. And obviously, if we're maintaining the house scale mass bulk and overall size, what you're doing is taking what was potential for a single-family residence and dividing it up. And as you go into more units within that same building envelope, you start to get more density. And hence, when you look at the density potential on these sites and on many of them in any event, you could get that, achieve that with the missing middle housing approach.
So.
Go ahead.
So the missing middle approach and the mapping of that, when we get to a discussion point, I have comments on that, but specifically to the table. Can you explain just the column of acres slash square feet? If I see something that says, for example, White Hill School, five point four, what is that five point four? Is that five point four acres? I'm just trying to understand the column.
It doesn't sound like square feet applies anywhere. Does square feet apply anywhere?
Well, you could take the five point four, wherever you see a, 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 a single-figure number, with the exception of a couple of them, that's acres. So where you see something that's in the thousands, that's square feet. That would only be in number fourteen. Everything else is in acres. So.
Then, then I would suggest for the next iteration of this, that for that column, you identify each one as rather as square feet or acres. That would be helpful on that. And then I really wasn't looking at the missing middle aspect of this. I was looking at, for example, School Street Plaza. How did staff come up with the potential for a hundred to a hundred and forty? Deer Park Villa, how did staff come up with the potential for thirty to seventy, what I would call dwelling units on there? I'm just trying to get a sense of how staff came up with those numbers. And then the White Hill School, why would we think that would be feasible in the near future for housing?
Well, let me start with the, the White Hill School, since you, you'd already asked that question. We were inspired by what we saw discussed and proposed out at the St. Quentin Point area, where they're talking about two hundred housing units. And we, in looking at White Hill School, behind the main school development, there are several acres of land that are pretty much flat. And knowing that school districts in conjunction with the state and developers who specialize in this type of housing are, are visioning housing for teachers and, and school employees. We looked at the White Hill School site. We have since met with the Marin County Superintendent of School. We've met with the head of the Board of Trustees. We're in the process of, of setting up further meetings with them. But we're, we're kind of excited by the potential to provide housing for teachers. It was very clear from our conversation with Mary Jane Burke that in, in common with many municipal or public employment organizations, they have a terrible time attracting and retaining teachers. And so we're, we're simply looking at acreage that's available, that has been, that is being currently proposed elsewhere in the county and could be used for this purpose, we believe, at White Hill School. And, and further conversations would be forthcoming, of course, to really look at the details of that.
And then if you could quickly just hit School Street Plaza and Deer Park Villa.
Right. So in terms of density, with School Street Plaza, that was an outreach that actually came to us from the owner of the parcel. And he was considering that type of, of, of unit amount. And the conversation we had with him, because in keeping with the, the discussions we've had about Objective Design and Development Standards and our zoning constraints, that they're going to have to be small units. And this goes to affordability by design. And the idea is that we know that when we're building your typical publicly supported affordable housing, you know, designated as such with deed restrictions, et cetera, there's long lead times and tremendous financing required. Whereas the potential to create affordable housing by design is designed, is to create micro units. And Andy showed some slides for that. But carefully done, much smaller units could fit into a fairly confined space such as School Street Plaza. And so this is very preliminary. Obviously, we're throwing these out so that the community and, and the commission and the council can give us your feedback about what you feel is appropriate. And we would take that information and make further refinements.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, you mentioned it earlier, but I, I just wanna make sure that the public hears it as well. That many of these sites are, are understood as partial. In other words, the White Hill School would remain. This would be adjacent to it. And Fairfax Market, that would remain. School Street Plaza, we do have a dedication to not displace either residents or commercial or office activity. So that would, that would be absolutely a consideration for, for anything going on there. And St. Rita's would be considered probably adaptive reuse, so that the structure itself is not envisioned as, as being demolished. Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, relating to Deer Park Villa, these are preliminary numbers. And, and we acknowledge that they're, they're going to be subject to further refinement in conjunction with the public review process direction from community leaders such as yourself and, and conversations with the property owners.
Thank you, Ben. This is, this is all helpful clarifications, helpful to see what your thinking has been at this preliminary stage. And so continuing in that vein, and I'm gonna go to Councilmember Goddard because you had your hand up quite a bit earlier. But what was your questions be?
Okay, thank you. I, I have a, I have a few questions, but I'm gonna try and make them quick and succinct. First of all, I, I'm hoping that you can answer this in a, in a condensed manner. But what does extra due diligence look like for prior opportunity sites? If you could just explain that without it going too deep. I want to know what, what add, what additions to our, our.
Um, I want to know what, uh, what add, what additions to our, our past reviews are we going to be doing? Um, in, in looking at these existing or already, already called outsides. Because we have several.
Yes, HCD has provided guidance on this. I, I don't have it set to memory. I, I was a lot closer to it a couple of weeks ago, so I am a little distance from knowing it verbatim. But, um, certainly having a developer who is willing to say that they're wanting to move forward. Um, making sure that there are, that it's free of, of. Of obstruction or, or that there's very few constraints on, on it becoming a possibility. So, um. I think that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Coler, it mentioned earlier about the idea of conditional use being required. So that would be an example of, uh, if we were able to remove that kind of requirement. For a location where it's understood that housing is, is, uh, really intended to be in that location. If we were to remove that requirement, that would be an example of furthering the possibility. Um, uh, um, exaggerating the possibility that development may occur in the next eight years.
Okay, thank you very much, Andy. Um, next question is, are we basing our densities? Um, on being designated suburban at twenty units per acre? Are we looking at thirty? Because it looks like what we're accounting for here looks closer to thirty.
It's true that HCD does recognize twenty as, as being affordable for suburban area. Um. This is a range and, and you're right that the higher number here in the range is, um. Is closer to that thirty. Uh, I also think it may be useful to, um. Look at images side by side, understand that density doesn't always relate to what, uh. What would be occurring in the landscape. Um, in other words, the idea that the objective design and development standards are moving forward. Probably go, um, further in making a difference for the, the vision of the future for Fairfax. If, if the goal is to not have large boxy anonymous kinds of buildings. If that makes.
I'm not quite sure I got that answer, but I'm gonna, not going to dwell on it. So, um, but I'll keep, I'll keep that in mind and ask further questions at a different point. Um, I want to go to, uh, AB six eighty six, um, uh, affirmatively furthering fair housing. And I'm wondering, in the staff report on, uh, page five, it, um. It says that by definition, um, we do not have any historically disadvantaged, um, communities. So I'm not quite sure what that definition of, um, of historically disadvantaged communities is. And how it is that, um, we're going to work with that definition as we look at equity. Um, what you're saying is very centered in this process. So without it being a. Yeah, I, I know it has to be meaningful action, so I want to know what that means.
Right. It, it, so Marin County generally has, has very few, uh, concentrated areas of, um. Let's see, that, that are recognized by, um. HCD as needing to be addressed. So out of the five requirements for AB six eighty six, there's one requirement that does not apply to most of Marin County. Because there are not these concentrated areas of, of, um, poverty. That doesn't mean that segregation hasn't occurred. In fact, it may have occurred so much that there aren't, um. So, uh, so there's a certain due diligence that's required for the all five factors. One of the factors does not relate directly to Fairfax because there's not a particular. Mapped designated area within the town of Fairfax that, um, is recognized as needing to be. Uh, a, a community that needs to be addressed specifically. So, um. I'm happy to share with you those resource, those, the source information for that, if you'd like.
Yeah, I would love that.
Add one thing, Renee, um, and Andy. So I sit on a couple of countywide committees on this. And this really goes back to what HUD defines as disadvantaged communities. So. It doesn't mean that we don't have to look at it from a greater lens. But we don't have really segregated populations like you see potentially in Golden Gate Village or in the canal. And so one of the things, one of the things we need to do for six eighty six is we need to look at. Drawing people to our community, so we're not continuing to perpetuate the segregation that does exist in this county. In these areas where you see very concentrated, uh, populations. That are truly potentially segregated. And so it's, it's really kind of a HUD definition. I've asked this in my county stuff as well. But what it means is we have to reach out further to get more folks to come to Fairfax. So we truly have a diverse population, which we don't have currently, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't, um, this is still questions, but we could talk, we could talk more about it later in the meeting. I do have some strong feelings about it. Um, uh, the last question I have is. Um, we, we've chosen to look at the housing element and then we're bringing in the safety element and bringing that to the public. Um, I'm just wondering if people might be wondering why, if we're developing these maps. Um, we're developing the flood zone maps, we're developing the one way in, one way out, we're studying these things. The maps that are coming out are, are brilliant, but I'm wondering the order in which we're doing this. The public may wonder why, um. Why we have a spot in the staff report where it says that, um. That, uh, the fifteen sites include sites with hazards and environmental constraints. Some of these can be mitigated through existing code sections. Um, I, I think it gets a little confusing and it, and it might be important as we go forward tonight to explain how the, how. How these two elements will interface as we're looking at potential sites. Um, because it feels a little bit like, yes, we're aware of fire and yes, we're doing something about it. We're not sure where the exemptions can be. We have the researching, but we're gonna choose these sites. We're gonna start the process of, of discussing sites before we know the actual constraints. So, uh, yeah, I just, at some point, we could, uh, be mindful of that. I've heard a lot of, uh, concerns from the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I believe the next person whose hand was up was Councilwoman Rose Plaismer-Helman.
Thank you. I appreciate, uh. The questions before me, so some of mine have gotten answered, but. So I'm just wondering, because I'm getting a lot of questions leading up to this meeting. Um, I'm just wondering if we. Touch on line item by line item, because I know people are confused, like, for example. White Hill, which I think we've covered, is not abundantly clear. Um. That it's the lot behind the school, right? And, you know, some people may not even be aware of that. So I, I would recommend to this table, um. You know, in an effort to be fully transparent and descriptive, to add a column that just gives a line or two of what you have in mind here. Because it's not White Hill School, right? It's the line, is the land behind White Hill School. Um. So that's one, um, suggestion. And then as I look down this list on, you know, some of these commercial sites. Um. I guess it's not a one size fits all in terms of an answer to this question. But, you know, it would be helpful to know, again, what you'd have in mind. Is it building up like Fairfax Market? Is it building on top of Fairfax Market? Or where exactly are you seeing that one acre is, um? I have the same question for St. Rita's. Um. And I, I know you've obviously provided a map, but it's really not clear to me. And I know for members of the public as well, because I'm feeling a lot of questions, as I mentioned. So I don't know if it's worthwhile to go line item by line item. But I, I would really like to understand better, uh, St. Rita's, uh, Fairfax Market. Um. And I'd like to understand, um, if some of these, like. Commercial sites have, have you been engaged already? If, if it landed on this table, have you been engaged with the lot owner and the commercial? Site owner? Is that a fair? Assumption?
Andy, uh. Well, in terms of some of your specific questions, we're, we're starting with these and we recognize there's limitations on the map. I think coming out of this meeting, um, if we're not told that, A, this is a nonstarter from your, your groups. Uh, we would proceed with more detailed site-specific maps. Um, it's also important to understand that these are preliminary draft concepts. And that you're right, uh, if you're asking that question, then everybody's got those questions. Uh, specific to some of the sites you mentioned, Fairfax Market, um, the market would be retained. Uh, we have had a conversation with the owner and his representative. Um, it would entail the area, uh, to the west and north of the existing market, the parking lot. Um, and some configuration on that portion of the site. Uh, in terms of the St. Rita's site, uh, it would, it would exclude the school, the current school area and the primary parking in front of that. But would be the remainder of the parcel, uh, closer to Marin to Drive. Um, and in terms of conversations with property owners, unless the parcels were, are currently listed in our housing element. Uh, for, uh, as development, uh, opportunity sites. Uh, we have had conversations with every property owner, uh, with the exception of the Jovas Witness people. We've had outreach, but to date we have not heard back from them.
Okay. So no, no one's gonna be surprised by this table, is what I mean.
Right.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna hold off on any comments. Uh, I see that you want, you know, number three ways to ensure compliance on six eighty six. I'm gonna wait to comment on that till after Liz Darby, um, presents. Does that sound acceptable?
That's a great idea.
Okay. And then, um, I think the tool is fantastic. I, I had a question. I don't know if that's for Amy Flynn. Um. I, I presume you can pick and choose what tools you want. I, I think it's really, really a strong, um, feature to be adding. And I think our residents will, um, surely take advantage of it. But without getting into too much detail, and we should have obviously a process for that, um. I'm assuming, and if you could, uh, confirm the assumption that you can pick and choose what features and tools, and it's pretty customizable. And then one of the questions I had is, um, on the comments section that you could, could, is that, does the public see those comments? Or does the only, um, EMC and the planning department, et cetera, see those comments?
My understanding is, uh, that the, the comments are, are not, uh, something where people can, um, see. And, and thumbs up, thumbs down, anything like that. But what we can do is we export the analytics, so we can certainly make those comments available. And we can find ways to have them become more interactive through our website, if that's what we choose to do. But we can certainly make them available to decision makers going forward.
Go ahead.
Further to your comment about, uh, being able to customize it, that's exactly why we had those three communities. Because in those conversations, we said, oh, yeah, we want to definitely start with the area code descriptor. And then people could dial it down and it's provide more specificity about their location if they choose. Um, site-specific analysis, obviously Fairfax is going to be, uh, a combination, a hybrid of site, specific sites. And then questions about missing middle and duplexes and quadplexes. So that the, we would pick and choose among those three communities, the, the, the features that seem to provide the best functionality. Uh, for this town.
Okay. And then last question, and you, you mentioned something about size requirements for the eco village. Do any of these, I'd, uh, line items, uh, qualify or would be eligible for an eco village in, in your mind?
In my mind, you'd need a minimum of five acres.
Okay.
But we can certainly pursue, um, discussion with, with, um. More experts on that.
Okay, I think that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Councilmember Catrano, your hand's been up for a while. Thank you.
All good. Thanks, Mayor Ackerman. I let everybody else ask the really great meaty questions. Um, so, uh, just three quick questions. Um, the first one, Ben, I was just wondering the Opticos, uh. Objective Design Review Standard stuff, is that, does, do examples live on either the town of Fairfax website? Or the Fairfax Speaks dot com site, um, of what that looks like? And, or has that been made available yet to the public?
Um, we do have the draft that was developed for the Planning Commission, uh, and discussed what, oh, gosh, was it the twelfth of August? No, I think it was the twenty ninth of July, uh, one of those two dates. Um, actually, one of our commissioners, it's a really thick document. Um, but it does describe the various zones and architectural styles. And that would provide some idea of what we have in mind when we're talking about duplexes and quadplexes and, and missing middle housing.
Great. And so that, um, if people are interested in that, um, they could find that draft. As a supplement or, uh, an item on the former Planning Commission packet on our town website?
Yes, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've also posted that on the Fairfax Speaks site.
Uh, if we haven't, that'll be part of our, our larger rollout in this next month. And I, I do also want to mention, uh, Councilmember Catrano, that we also anticipate using some of those graphics within the Balancing Act tool. Uh, maybe speaking less about density and more about the actual number of units. And, and sharing a graphic of, of what that, um, that tool that you'll be adopting here soon, the, um, the odds, yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, next quick question. Um, you know, I'm aware that the county, for the public too, the county has officially launched Zone Haven with the Wildfire Prevention Authority. But I note in the staff report, um, there's the discussion about the pending evacuation study. And I'm just wondering how much of that discussion informed the, the sites that you all identified? And whether or not, um, or what the timeline might be for the, the formal rollout or publication of that? And how that will inform this process, if some of this stuff is premature, based on the fact that that has yet to be released?
Maybe I can add something as the board member of Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. Because I'm not sure that Andy or Ben will know the details of that. So Zone Haven is really an interactive data tool that uses the current mutual threat zones. And remember, we did our community-friendly evacuation maps, which Andy showed the, the primary one. And those do a lot of the ins and outs. We just, uh, let an RFQ for what's called a risk assessment for the evacuation study. And that won't even be let for a couple of months. The formal evacuation study is probably about a year out. And so, um, the work is progressing, but. We won't have that data, I don't think, for our housing element. But we do have, because we worked with police and fire on those community-friendly evacuation maps. We're ahead of a lot of communities that, uh, don't actually have everything mapped out about the ins and outs. So I don't know if that's helpful, but I can find more information if you want more later. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Coler. That's, that's actually quite helpful to just give the public a sense of the timeline for when we'll know more about that. Um, the final thing I was just gonna ask, uh, switching gears a little bit is, uh, you know, the, the balancing act thing is, is. An attempt to, you know, increase the engagement on the site as it currently exists. And obviously there's more information that's going to be included. I guess one of my questions as it pertains to, um, engagement is just like the general outreach side of it. I, I definitely saw Ben in the street and grabbed some Fairfax Speaks coasters. And I know there were bookmarks and, and other creative tools. But I'm wondering, what's the, like, what's the overall marketing budget for that? Um, and I'm just trying to gauge how I can best comment on or, or recommend opportunities. Um, you know, there was just a political campaign through the pandemic, lots of mailers, door hangers, things with QR codes that drove people to websites. Um, other successful tools, um, based on volunteer labor power, of course, in a lot of ways. But just trying to think, like, how do we get beyond? But just trying to think, like, how do we get beyond, like, 100 registrants, right? Like, that's a very low amount, even though we've had 1,000-plus unique visitors. So that's one of my bigger concerns as it relates to the whole endeavor here, is that general outreach, which is sort of beyond the engagement question. Thanks.
I think tonight, Councilmember Catrano, what we want is exactly what you were just mentioning, is not even focusing yet on budget, because priorities can be shifted depending on what we feel, or what you feel, and what your council and the Planning Commission feel is our best opportunities or good opportunities to enhance that engagement. One of the things, for example, we've had a flyer into the county and A-Bag for some time to get translation, because we know that there's a community that we need to provide multilingual outreach to. And so that's pending. But, yeah, we'd love to hear from you. It sounds like you have some pretty good idea about what might assist that.
Sure. I'll save that when the comments section is happening after the public speaks too. But thanks. I'll definitely give some input.
Thank you. And we've got two planning commissioners with their hands up. And just a reminder that we're, we have a pretty short period of time to complete this meeting, but this is good to get these questions. Planning Commissioner Fergoso.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment for staff regarding the format of this opportunity site spreadsheet. I know that in our prior housing element, we also, we had the same spreadsheet, which is a handy tool for quickly looking at what we've got. But in moving forward, I think it would be really helpful. I know in the past, each opportunity site had its own page. And I see that as a great opportunity to have a page for each of these sites that has this basic information. But also, if, for instance, you're proposing that it simply be a single family, that you have an image of a single-family home. If you're proposing, as you do in several areas with 5,000 to 7,000 square feet, that they could be duplexes, triplexes, we could take some of the odds images and include them on the page for that site, so that people begin to have a better understanding of identifying the site with a visual image of what could be constructed there, as opposed to some of the questions that have come up earlier about square footage, and is that acre, is that acre-feet or square-feet, or what the heck is that? I think it would be a much more user-friendly way. And at the same time, we could have some of the zoning information, any potential changes that need to be made. Anyway, just a quick idea, I'd be happy to talk that through at some other point with you, Ben, if you would like to, and I'll let that go for now. Thank you, Mayor Ackerman.
Thank you. And Mimi, did you have any questions? And then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Ackerman. Very quickly, I understood that the Affordable Housing Committee had advised that we take nothing off the table. And yet, on the table, we have some things that have been taken off the literal table, which are the last couple of entries. And I know Town and Country has its own special zoning, which, you know, is probably why that one certainly deserves to be there. And the others I know are, you know, Jolly Hill is a beloved piece of town-owned property. And Glenn Drive, could you just explain why, despite what we heard from the Housing, Affordable Housing Committee, we have those three not-for-consideration sites on the table?
Well, as you said, we've received prior direction to exclude those sites. They're being shown because, as somebody else pointed out, there's not that many vacant or lightly utilized sites in town, and those are larger sites. So they're specifically noted because they've been requested to be not part of the housing sites conversation at this time.
And Affordable Housing specifically requested Glenn Drive come off, because that's the one that we rezoned to limit the zoning. So it's something like only five or 10 potentially can go there. So it didn't make sense to say, now you want to go back. And I can also say that I think I was one of the folks who said, Jolly Hill, it's a piece of town-owned open space that the Open Space Committee cleans every year. Town and Country requires the voters to change that zoning. So I think it's good to show that they're there. But the feasibility of doing any of those doesn't make sense. And so that's some of the direction we provided in Affordable Housing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Newton. So I think at this point, we should go into public comment. And though I believe we only have three hands raised at the moment, we do have quite a number of attendees. So I'm going to assume that we'll have enough public comment that we should go to, we should limit it to two minutes per person for tonight. And we've, as we've seen, we did, we do have in the staff report and in the presentation some specifics about the kind of input that the folks working on this are looking for. So with that, if we can go into the public comment, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I see right now seven hands raised, and we will start with Peter. Peter, you're unmuted now, and you are followed by Lauren Tamkin. You might have to unmute yourself, Peter.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to ask how amenable this software, which sounds like it's pretty neat and well-conceived, could be adapted to include the oil fire egress concerns? So that when we decide to add a few houses in one or another area, somehow it would weigh in on what kind of upgrades in the infrastructure for transportation that would be needed?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lauren Tamkin, followed by Rebecca Collins. Lauren, you're unmuted now.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, simply here just to state my disappointment in you guys all just being okay with moving forward with this kind of preposterous development. And there's so many things to talk about that could go wrong with these kind of decisions that you're making for Fairfax at this point. And just on its face, I mean, Fairfax will not be the same whatsoever as it is today if you guys make these kind of arrangements and go through with this kind of appalling development. So I'm just here to simply say that I totally object to what you guys are doing and what you guys are talking about. I can't believe I'm not hearing more objection from these people here on our town council that seem to think that they know about Fairfax and what Fairfax and its beautiful, small-town vibe has represented for a lot of people that have come to this town, that have just thoroughly just been in awe and in appreciation of its quaint, of its, you know, cool vibe and cool nature, and, you know, no big businesses, not overdeveloped, just this, it's one road in and one road out, basically. And I could go on about the safety measures. I can go on about the traffic that I already experienced today if anything wrong goes on that road. I just don't understand in any way, shape, or form, how you guys could even sit there and move on and on and on with these meetings in agreement with what they want to do. And who are these people? What, what? These are, this is a developer's dream. And I would, I seriously do not believe, in my experience with any of this development in our town, that it's going to be affordable for the average person. Do you really think teachers are going to live right there and live in some apartment? I just, I just, I'm beside myself.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, the staff report does describe a certain amount about how this has come about and about what the consequences are. But thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rebecca Collins, followed by Medicine. And Rebecca, you're unmuted now.
Hi, thank you so much. I have a lot of thoughts about what's happening. And I think it looks like you guys have put together a good process. I'm mostly thinking about seniors, though, because there's a lot of conversation about aging in place. But I think when people say that, what they're thinking about is a homeowner who owns their home, that gets to stay in their home. And I think there are a lot of seniors in Fairfax who, you know, aging in place means something else. And it means being able to stay in Fairfax where they've hung on, you know, in their youth and, you know, through their middle age, and now, you know, they're elders and they're living on Social Security. And they're looking at having to leave the town that they've lived in for 20, 30, 40, 50 years. And, you know, I personally know people, and I'm sure a lot of, you know, other people do, who are really just, you know, clinging to the edge of that. And there are people who are living in their cars here to afford to, you know, not have to commute. There's just a lot of that going on, and I'm very concerned because, you know, some dear friends of mine didn't get into Victory Village. And I'm also wondering how, you know, does senior housing count towards our numbers? Can we create other places like Victory Village? How are people in town that really, really need housing right now, how are they being counted? And are we really including all the people that we need to include? You know, someone who's living on Social Security under $1,500 a month, and CalFresh hardly cuts it, like, that needs to be truly addressed, and they need to be assigned living spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
The next speaker is Medicine, followed by Liesel Blash. Medicine, you're unmuted now. You may have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Good evening.
Okay. Hi, thank you so much. Yes, my name is Holly Beatty, and I am the owner of Medicine. I, Medicine is a community center and yoga studio wellness center in School Street Plaza. I also rent another unit in School Street Plaza where I live and I work. And I've been here for about five years. So there's a few things that I'd like to say, because I've been very involved in talking about building at School Street with the owner, Mr. Azazi, for a number of years, and I'm very invested in the community. I also just took 10th place in our recent recall election for the governor. So I am somewhat politically involved in our community, and I care what's happening. So one thing I just wanted to say is that when you have such a long meeting time between yourselves, and then you leave just two minutes for public comment, and then you tell people what you want to hear in that public comment, it's not really a very democratic process for the public to engage in. So I would suggest with such an important issue, if you're looking for public engagement, you know, Councilman Couture was just saying he wants to figure out how to get more people involved. Well, certainly having a little bit more involvement in these meetings would also be helpful and a great step towards that. I'm not, I'm not completely opposed to what's happening. I mean, I think that there's, it's like a little pendulum swing where we haven't had a lot of approval of anything, and now there's an approval of an amount of housing that seems overwhelming for safety, for resources, and for the population to be able to absorb. So I'm hoping that maybe through the process, a, you know, balance could be something that we strive for, where, you know, because I heard Andy say that a road that only has one way in or out is not a good place to build some of these higher-density areas. But if you consider...
Excuse me, but you're...
So I would like to ask for another minute to finish a couple of thoughts, if that's possible. You want civic engagement, and I have some things to share that are constructive.
Okay, very quickly, please.
So I just want to say something we should point out is that if for any reason there's a fire in the White Hill area, there really is only one road in and out, not Sir Francis Drake for the entire community. So I think that that's something just to consider there. And then second, I would like to see if there can be a little bit more greenery. I like the idea of the Eco Village model, where, because if you have smaller units, but then you have community areas, it really provides a balance of positive community. And it seems like if we could get more access to more land, like in the open space area, so that we could, we could meet the numbers that we need to meet, but with a little bit more spaciousness involved. I had been talking to Mr. Azazi here about an Eco Village for some time, and we actually drew up plans for how that would work here, and I can share them. We have it on paper already, has been for a couple of years. But the thing is that you, that green space is very important for a quality of life. So we don't want to just have small micro apartments with lots of density.
We really need to finish.
Yeah, so, so in the future, please, in the future, please offer more time for public engagement if that's actually what you're looking for.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Liesel Blash, followed by Patrice. Liesel, you're unmuted now.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to put out there that people should be aware, you know, we have the RENA numbers, and those are, of course, going to cause people to be a little worked up. But there are also, there's a lot more to the housing element than just those numbers. There are a various number of programs and policies that are also part of the plan. So I just really encourage people to also look at the other things that go into the housing element that really talk a lot about, I would call housing justice. I had some questions that I'd like to address. So in general, I think the state really doesn't allow us the option to simply opt out of this process. It seems like where we have local control is on how we choose to implement it. So if somebody could confirm that. Another question is, can you clarify, I know Fairfax appealed its RENA numbers, and those appeals are starting, I think, this Friday. So I'm wondering if you could let us know when those appeals will be heard and what, when the outcomes will be reported. I've also wanted to note that when we talk about segregation, we are a segregated community. I think we're technically called a racially concentrated area of affluence. So segregation isn't just communities of color. It's like white communities that are primarily white. So I really liked the AB 686 part a great deal. And I hope that when we're doing this process, we're going to reach out to our workforce as well as current residents when we look at equity issues, and really have a good public process around discussing what's found in the analysis. And some other questions that I have that I've brought up before that I think, you know, may be answered. But, you know, for instance, we don't yet have an inclusionary zoning ordinance. We could have more robust education on or enforcement of our existing fair housing measures on which we've been, you know, pretty good. But I think there probably needs to be more information on those out in the public. And I'm also thinking that we could look more at how rentals are listed and promoted in the community to make sure that we have a broader scope of advertising. And finally, I just want to say, I really love the idea of the teacher housing. Thompson Dorfman in Mill Valley is like a frontrunner in the nation in creating teacher housing. They've been very successful all around the Bay Area. The units are affordable. They are the people that are doing part of the Oak Hill development over by San Quentin. And so I think that's a really exciting avenue to pursue. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Liesel.
The next speaker is Patrice. And you are unmuted now. And after Patrice comes Frank Egger.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Hello, Patrice.
Hello, Bruce. Um, I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Um, my first question is, how are you guys defining affordable housing? Because when I lived at School Street Plaza, I had a one bedroom for $26.50 a month. That's not affordable, but I moved here from San Francisco, so it seemed affordable to me. I also think that you guys are pushing the development angle in a way that's just going to be pushed back at you when you could actually look at vacant buildings. You can look at buildings like mine. I now live in a 12-unit building. A third of it is Airbnb. Why are we doing that? I don't like living with people coming in and out, especially during a pandemic. So why, why, why can't we make these units long-term units? And I'm not even talking affordable because Fairfax is not affordable. But I'm talking about units that people can actually live in and call home and build community. And landlords who are taking a lot of money away from the town by doing this Airbnb. And I think that we should also do, and it's on you guys, an audit of vacant properties and properties that have been sitting vacant for years. Why aren't we finding those people? Why aren't we making those people add residences because they're not using them? It just, to me, it just seems like you guys are just banging your heads against a wall. And I've only lived here for two years, but this conversation has not changed. It's been the same one. Like, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing twice and again, and again. And I just think it's time for creativity and some, some more innovation to think about this issue.
Appreciate those thoughts, Patrice.
The next speaker is Frank Egger, followed by Pam Mix. And Frank, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Frank Egger, Metaway, speaking for Safe Fairfax and Fairfax Tomorrow. Fairfax needs a live town hall meeting on the ball field to discuss this housing issue and the plans. If we can have an open town picnic on the ball field, surely we can have a town hall meeting on the ball field. And, and, and it makes sense to me. We've been told it's, this is required by state law. There is no case law confirming the legality of the recent state housing laws. Plans list the properties that could accommodate up to 845 new living units. Most of Fairfax is in a wildland urban interface zone. Wildland fires have destroyed thousands of homes just this summer. So the question I have is how, how will the consultants prevent a Paradise-type fire from happening here in Fairfax? Redeveloping Fairfax by targeting homes built before 1951 in the flats with up to four units is, is really unacceptable, especially then we're going to talk about three to five-story apartment and condo projects along the Sir Francis Drake Broadway Center Boulevard corridor. So how will the, how the, the, so another question is, when will the EIR be prepared? Surely require approving plans for up to 845 units is going to need an EIR. Fairfax is the last of the old towns. This plan is a gift to developers, houseflippers and speculators. It's about market rate housing. Why destroy what brought most of us to Fairfax in the first place? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Pamela Mix, followed by Miriam Hamza. And Pam, you're unmuted now.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief, I think. Having been on the planning commission, I think it was nine years and having met hundreds of hours for the general plan. Mimi was there for the open, open space element. I haven't heard much tonight. I've heard a lot about, you know, this lot and that lot and zoning, but I have not heard you all talk about character. And that is the prominent paramount issue to keep Fairfax, Fairfax. So if y'all could go back to the general plan and look through those writings, those blood, sweat and tears of writings, please incorporate those, those facts and those feelings, et cetera. Last is more of a practical issue. I still do not understand why we are not trying to enforce illegal ADUs. We're just letting it go. And I think if we did all kinds of PR with amnesty, you know, it, it could get some meat to it and at least give us some units. But I don't see the town doing anything about it. We have in the past and it just sort of, you know, dried out. So those are my two thoughts and I really appreciate you all there tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam, for those thoughts.
The next speaker is Miriam Hamza, followed by Sam Wu. And Miriam, you're unmuted now.
I'm going to try not to get heated. I tend to get heated. I'm curious, among other things, about why teacher housing would be permitted because we are not allowed to have any local preferences in Fairfax. That's why Victory Village left so many local elderly women who live here, who are homeless, left them homeless. So we're not allowed to have local preferences. So I don't see how we can have workforce preferences either. I don't think that's allowable either with the federal funds. I asked about this time and time and time again with Victory Village and I was constantly ignored and told how it's going to be all Fairfax people who are going to end up there. And the town council just let RDC, whatever their name is, snow them entirely on that issue. I've been looking at the CPUC fire zones. So the, the entire west, well, the side of the hills, right up to Sir Francis Drake is almost completely in extreme fire zone. Then you've got a block or two that's no fire zone. And then you've got an elevated fire zone on the other side of Sir Francis Drake. And obviously, if there's a major wildfire that's moving a football field a minute, it's not going to care about that one or two blocks that isn't on the map as an elevated fire zone. We already can't get out of town. We already know that. So while it's really nice to put new housing in areas that are easier to evacuate, we already can't evacuate. We all know what happened when, when our police shut down Sir Francis Drake for an hour the other month for a minor car accident. Every single road in town was backed up for an hour and a half. No one is getting out of this town alive if there's a fire that shuts down Center and/or Sir Francis Drake. And that was on a normal workday, under normal conditions. The fire danger is just incomprehensible. I'm looking to move because of it. I talk to realtors all the time who tell me people are leaving Fairfax because of the.
Thank you, Miriam. Yeah. Appreciate your comments.
The next speaker is Sharon Sagar, followed by Michelle R. And Sharon, you're unmuted now.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, I hope we do talk more about traffic because I think, you know, it's something that's concerning to everyone. We still don't have people fully back to work to know what the real traffic impacts would be. But if you added that many units, I just think realistically, you can't expect that all of those people are going to be riding on public transit and that there will be more cars on the road. And the reality is every community along the Sir Francis Drake corridor is being asked to add units. So we're just multiplying that beyond the town of Fairfax and the impacts that we make in this town, but also the housing that will be built elsewhere that will still go on the same road. Also, we do need to talk about the character of our town and how that could be significantly changed. And whether we as a community have the infrastructure to support all of this additional housing, there's impacts on, you know, services like schools that if you build that many units, there's going to be that many more children in town who will need schools. And you have to talk about all of those other types of impacts to the community. I'm not opposed to finding more housing and affordable housing for people. I think that's a really great conversation for us to have as a town and to make sure that people can continue to live here who want to live here. And maybe the challenge is to come up with more creative solutions and building multi-story apartment buildings to do that. Also, I think it would be really easy for the community if you could find a way to do Google View, Google Views of each parcel that you're talking about and overlay the parcel numbers on it so that when people are making choices, they can say, oh, St. Rita's, you're talking actually about the current church area and the rectory building. And, you know, instead of just having a parcel number listed there, it should be really visual to people what you're talking about in terms of considering for those properties. And also, you know, being involved with the school there right now. I know that for traffic circulation, it's really important for us to have the entrance on Miranda Drive and the exit on Sir Francis Drake. So if you built on the church portion of the property, how does that affect that entrance and egress from the property for the school? Also, what other ideas do people have as solutions to this rather than just putting out these few things? Do, do residents who pass away without heirs, does the county get that housing? Could those houses be subdivided into multiple units to create additional housing? There's so many things that could be put out there. But I do like the idea of saying, if you're going to put 40 to 60 units on this property, what does that building have to look like? You know, is it going to be a four-story building with 10 units on each floor? You know, people need to have. Is parking underneath all of those units? You know, but just give us some idea of what, what we're choosing between. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michelle R., followed by Michael McIntosh. And Michelle, you're unmuted now.
Hi, Michelle Rodriguez, Froststick Avenue. Thanks so much for the opportunity for public input. I took the time to provide in writing my feedback on the housing sites and attachment B, provided them to the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. So it was sad that it wasn't an attachment here this evening. And I'm wondering how many other people have commented and it's not being forwarded on then as an attachment to the staff report. I had concerns about Miranda Heights being listed and the number of sites being identified not being aligned with the RENA allocation. Also, just the unclarity around the ADUs and how they're going to be treated. I think that the, I, the building type is going to be incredibly important. And so there are two aspects to that that's lacking detail right now. And that is the protection of the historic district and other historic buildings as well as the odds process. And the designs that were coming out of that did not seem to be consistent with the eclectic character and design here in Fairfax. The public feedback method, I'd really love to see an open house and a lot more conversation with the public. I think Fairfax speaks is very difficult to use. From an implementation standpoint, I support programs such that, that triggers like implementation. I don't think that the rezonings occurred under the last housing element and code enforcement was lacking. I'd like to see a new inclusionary housing ordinance with mandatory long-term affordability as well as a water retrofit requirement for every new dwelling unit that is built as well as the safety section of the CEQA document being really in depth beyond what CEQA requires, just taking into account the increase in density and how the impact of that in terms of the evacuation and safety, safety exiting requirements. Thanks very much for the opportunity to comment this evening.
Thank you, Michelle. Much appreciated.
The next speaker is Michael McIntosh, followed by Kevin Curtis. Michael, you're unmuted now.
Hello, thank you for taking my comments. I am speaking on behalf of 65 people, so this will afford me some additional time. I will try to be brief. The first thing I'd like to say, listening to Ben saying that certain properties are excluded from the process, excluding some process from when it's supposed to be inclusive is absolutely subjective and capricious. This would also allow a legal challenge to this entire process because now you've already extended your prejudice to this process by excluding some. My biggest concern with the additional density coming into our town, before the pandemic, a unit was in Marin County generated 11.7 car trips per day. So think of that, every time you have 100 units, you're looking at 1,000 car units per day. The problem with these impacts from the additional traffic on the sewerage, school, road impacts, EMTs, police and everything else is affordable housing also gets a 55-year property tax waiver for some of these add-ons, which means that those add-ons and the impacts are passed on to other people. So when you look at our seniors who are living on fixed income, you're actually forcing our seniors out. And the first thing we want to do is protect our seniors. So this entire process of bringing in people that have not been in the community for a long time, haven't paid their taxes to have an opportunity to age in their house, are being forced out by these additional taxes. And I really think that's unfair to the seniors that purchased their home, the long-term plan to be here for many years. So I encourage you to look at something on how these property tax waivers for the affordable housing are actually affecting your seniors on fixed income. And I think Frank Egger is absolutely correct. If we can have big town meetings and big town picnics, I think the fact that you're precluding us from having an open public forum on such an important process is nothing more than a small, limited group trying to control a conversation. I do appreciate allowing to make the comments. I hope you all take those sincerely as I presented them. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
The next speaker is Kevin Curtis, followed by Deborah Benson. Kevin, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. I just wanted to say again, you know, thank you to all of you, including staff and, and Andy for this process, this preliminary process. You have nine years plus to put these housing units into effect. I just, you know, throwing out that reminder. And my question tonight is, is really for Andy and, and certainly, you know, just an aspect to put it into future meetings with some of his reports for staff and in the town council. And that is that, you know, there's the 2050 Bay Area Plan. It has a large transportation aspect to it, hundreds of millions of dollars. And this transportation infrastructure is going to be going to each one of the cities in the Bay Area. And, and in a previous meeting, Mimi had mentioned the main corridors of Fairfax as being the term infill areas. And so my, my, my thought is to Andy is if there is a way to incorporate both anything that you have from the transportation, infrastructure rebuilding that will be going on over the next nine years, in incorporate that into the idea of where to help put additional housing units from a site location and analysis perspective, that would be wonderful. Some of those areas may be beneficial because they'll be more attractive to people that don't need to have an automobile and add that to our streets. It'll be some people that may be just. It'll be some people that maybe just can use transit to and from the city, for example. And I think that with those next upgrades to our streets, so it hopefully come, that it will alleviate a lot of these pressures that a lot of people are feeling, like the one-way routes and et cetera. So in addition to that, I think some of the terminology for that is within a quarter mile of a bus stop or a main transit area. Andy can certainly attest to if any of that has any value, is terminology. And then lastly, regarding the one-way streets, I don't know if that is something that is going to be turning into a resolution or not. But I seem to recall that HCD and ABAG have as part of all this umbrella of restrictions that they're putting on the town, a situation where you can't actually create resolutions that conflict with the larger agendas. And I don't know if that works or not, but thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Kevin.
The next speaker is Deborah Benson, followed by Sam Luke. And Deborah, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council members, for hearing me. Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive, long-term resident of Fairfax. So I have been attending council meetings and planning commission meetings for 20 years plus, going through revisions of the general plan and the ABAG numbers. And over all that time, there has been a push to identify units, most of which are illegal because people are concerned about paying taxes, coming up to code. We have these very highly-paid consultants right now who could be identifying some of these units. And I'm wondering why this isn't step number one. Former town manager Toy said that in order to identify these units downtown, we'd actually have to go around knocking on doors. So maybe it's time to knock on doors. I grew up in Baltimore. Mayor DeLisandro, many years ago, created a plan to redo some of the down areas of downtown and offered deeds to houses for $100 a year of refurbishment. So could we come up with something to bring these people forward for amnesty, which would allow them to put a tag on their property tax bills, not to be paid until the sale of the property perhaps? Give them some sort of amnesty for coming to legal with utilities? Let's get creative here. Another thing that hasn't happened that has been talked about for many years is identifying the historic buildings in town. So I have two words about moving forward with this process as you have outlined it. Don't. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Deborah.
The next speaker is Sam Luke, followed by Shelley Hamilton. Sam, you're unmuted now.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate this meeting. I'd personally like to point, and most of my comments will reiterate what other people have already said, but I think the public engagement is so low. Forty-eight people responding to a poll is immaterial. You have to get many more people engaged. And yeah, maybe it means going door-to-door. Honestly, with not too much offense intended, I don't have a lot of confidence in a lot of the process I've seen tonight. Some kind of straightforward questions from council didn't seem to get straightforward answers. The chart with the locations, it seems incomplete, contradictory. And it just, it seems like there could be so much more than other people already suggested what should be there. And I agree, just as an example, well, I'll continue, I have a few more things to say. I would like to see a more holistic approach to this whole process. You know, that software looks fun, but what I'd like to see is maybe a rec center in town, some public bathrooms, streets and sidewalks that could support kids riding a scooter to school. People talked about the character and infrastructure, but I really want to underline infrastructure. We barely have an infrastructure to support the existing town. And I'd love to hear what the plan is to improve infrastructure that's going to support, how many, 500 more units? The other aspect of that is really important is jobs. And I love the idea of living and working in the same place, but we don't have the jobs here to support low-income housing as is defined in this process. I mean, less than 50% of median income is still $70,000. So what are we going to have? We're going to have more commuters and more stress in the infrastructure. Finally, I'd like to say that I'd also like to see equity applied to the current landowners. And as I understand it right now, it's very difficult to build and develop your own land as a private landholder. So maybe we could just remove some of those obstacles if we're really concerned about housing in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
The next speaker is Shelley Hamilton, followed by Lynn Walsh. Shelley, you're unmuted now.
Hi, town council members and planning commissioners. I am speaking as a citizen in the Cascades and a former planning commissioner for nine years when we were doing our original housing element. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. First, I'd love to learn more about AB 686 and the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements. And not sure when that's going to happen, but I think that's an important element. And Andy, as you had mentioned earlier in the presentation, it seems to be one of the elements that comes up a lot with the state. So I'd love to learn more about that. With respect to that, I do believe that Fairfax can move forward, welcoming in new neighbors into affordable units while also maintaining the look and feel. And as others have mentioned, that very unique diversity of our downtown's architectural aesthetic, the feel and sounds and qualities of our neighborhoods and the human-scaled and engaging neighborhood land use qualities that make Fairfax livable, green and inclusive. I would encourage you and all of us, when we're making comments, to be very specific about what we mean when we, especially when we're talking about character. If you mean height, say height. If you mean the green space around buildings, say the green space around buildings. If you mean the aesthetic design of the facades in the downtown or the way that the architecture looks on the houses, then let's say that and be as specific about land use and design aesthetics as possible rather than being general. I think that will help us all in the process to move forward. With respect to that, I love the idea of taking that balancing tool and adding in both an equity and perhaps a climate impact metric onto the tool so that basically land use is all about trade-offs. We have to make decisions, nothing's ever perfect, you can't have everything, so we're making trade-offs. And that idea of looking at those trade-offs. I know, for example, if you build closer to transit, you have a climate trade-off. And I love the idea of having descriptive pages for each of the opportunity sites that explain more of the assumptions behind those sites. Again, also in terms of equity and climate trade-offs for each of those sites and the assumptions. So I look forward to the next iteration. It is an iterative process and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
The next speaker is Lynn Walsh, followed by Allison McCracken. Lynn, you're unmuted now.
Hi, this is Lynn Walsh. I live on Domingue Avenue. I have two children in the local Ross Valley School District. And I wanted to say thank you to the planning commission and the city council for the meeting tonight. And also to thank all the city staff and Andy for your work that you've presented tonight. I've been able to follow this process since the beginning. I've been able to participate in some of the engagement opportunities so far. And then I read in the staff report all the times that the team has gone out to all the stakeholder groups. And I just think that it's been really great in very challenging times to dive in and have in-depth conversations with stakeholder groups. And I want to support that continuing. I'm in support of housing in Fairfax and affordable housing here. I think that some of the creative solutions that are presented in the staff report, such as the missing middle framework, which is duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes that are beautifully built and have gorgeous design and fit well in our community. I think those are the solutions that are at hand. I'm really in support of workforce housing. I think that's really important. And I want to speak for myself as somebody who has children in the school district that I welcome the families that would come with the new housing. I would welcome them to join our community and our schools. And I would look forward to meeting them and getting to know them as they enrich our community. I don't have contact in the city, in the town here about workforce housing, but I assume that there's a workforce crisis going on in Marin. I hear multiple times people say they can't find workers. So the workforce housing would really support having a stable workforce for the employers and that would support our local businesses. So I see I'm running out of time. I just want to thank you for your engaging the community. I think your process has been very transparent. And I would say keep reaching out to the workforce, even if they aren't residents here. They are part of our community. And so maybe connecting with the folks at the chamber and the school district are all good sources for finding people who work here. They're part of our community. And I'd love to hear what they think about some of the proposals that are on the table. So thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
The next speaker is Allison McCracken, followed by Joe McGarry. Allison, you're unmuted now.
Hi there. You know, I lived in a duplex in the city and moved to a house, a single-family house in the hills because I wanted to live in a single-family neighborhood and enjoy the beautiful greenery. And I understand that the state is requiring us to increase the density. But my question is really as to why the Marin Town and Country Club is not being considered as the location to allocate a significant amount of this housing requirement, considering the size, the flat land, the safety of the property with the flood zones and so forth, as well as like its proximity to downtown and the walkability, not to mention the ability to create a rec center there and do affordable senior housing and do a mix of everything given the size of it, and then be able to preserve our single-family neighborhoods that we all so love and have appreciated for so long. You know, if I really wanted to live next to a fourplex or a sixplex or a duplex, I'd move back to the city. And so if we have this opportunity, and you mentioned rezoning and the possibility of rezoning before, I understand that the property is not currently in the housing element, but I'd like to understand why it's not being considered at this point in time since it's such a logical location to put housing on.
Thank you, Allison.
The next speaker is Joe McGarry. And there is no one after Joe. Joe, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, council and commissioners and everybody who's put so much time and work into all of this. And yeah, it's, and I want to also acknowledge the words of like that it was okay to jump in tonight and it's still okay to jump into tomorrow because I think that's an important message for everybody to hear that it's not too late to get in the process. I frankly jumped in tonight and really appreciate all the information that was available. And yeah, it's just exciting to go through this process with intention and purpose, working towards equity, you know, probably the, I don't know, but I'd imagine it's the first time, you know, in these cycles that there has been this focus and intention. And that's incredibly exciting and really want to amplify what Lynn Walsh said about our workforce and back it up with some data. I work at Good Earth Natural Foods, I think the largest employer in town, and looked at some numbers today and only a quarter of our employees, 25% of our employees actually work in Fairfax. So that's, you know, just about 63 employees of 250. And so when you talk about commute miles and emissions, I'm just hoping that we can continue to focus on workforce and finding them housing here in Fairfax. And anecdotally, you know, I had the privilege to watch, just your first name is Madeline Manuel, who lived in Richmond and the canal, worked with me at Good Earth and fall in love. And somehow they were able to get an apartment here in Fairfax together. And they've now had two children and, you know, their roots are in this town. I see them walking through town, playing in the parks. And they were afforded some things, some privileged things that they had access to daycare and sharing, you know, didn't have to pay for daycare because they could help each other out. And it's a game changer. If someone can work and live in the same town, it really changes lives. So I hope there can be an emphasis on that. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
There is another raised hand, and that is Lynn, followed by Mark Bell. Lynn, you're unmuted now.
Hello. Thanks, everybody, for showing up and having us tonight. I'm looking at the screenshots of all of you and nothing says build, build, build like Vice Mayor Hellman's backdrop. It's a drought, there's no water there. It just screams at me as we're talking about build, build, build. How to get people's attention? I think if you put story polls up on all the properties with big banners that say how many units are going to be proposed to be there? How many cars are going to be there? How many people will be allowed to live there? That will get people's attention. People are not, they're tired of the emails, they're tired of, I mean, this is hard to do. And I think having a big meeting at the ballpark is a good idea. We did it when they tried to build Phil Lesh's place in the pavilion. And that was really productive, I thought. Crosstalk is important. I think still, we need to have a fire drill of the entire town as it is now. Like at 2:00 in the morning, when all the cars are parked all the way up the hill, bumper to bumper, they're already pushing garbage cans off the side of the road. I saw something on Nextdoor, they got mad because they couldn't get down the narrow street, so they just pushed the garbage cans down the side. So I think we need to have an active fire drill in the middle of the night because these people can't even get out of their driveways on a good day. And people in the valley are dependent. If you can't go out towards the coast and the only exit Woodacre and St. Geronimo have to get out is to go through Fairfax, you know, they're depending on us having it together. Victory Village has cars, there was all the talk about no cars. Well, there are cars there. And Marin Town and Country is just not interested in having housing. If you have been here for a few generations, you know, that's not going to happen. So I think it's more visual. If you put up story polls, people are going to say, hey, what's going on? And maybe they'll call you guys. I think it's important. So thanks for trying to do something door-to-door. I don't know, it's a visual thing for a lot of people. Thank you very much. Good luck.
The next speaker is Mark Bell. And Mark, you're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. I agree with what Frank said, this isn't proven case law. I agree with Lauren from her comments earlier. And the other thing to know is taking account in is that this is obsolete data. People are leaving the state of California. The ABAG numbers are based on false projections. California has so many people leaving that we lost a seat on the House of Representatives. I know someone who works in this area. They're with one of the top firms in researching the entire country. People are leaving California. You don't talk about bonus, density bonuses when you're talking about these units. Is that going to come into play? Victory Village was supposedly 40 units. It ended up as what, 55 because of density bonuses? Is that what's going to happen with these 400, 500, 600 units? You're going to have like more density bonuses? That's going to bring it up to 700 or 800 units? The town can't handle it. People are going to die if there's a fire. People may even die just because there's no water. And you want to bring in how many people? The town can't handle it. And I'd like to say, well, you know, you're going to have all these deaths on your hands, but probably you're going to be dead along with the rest of us. So I guess we're all going to go up in flames together. And the reason nobody is interested in your little game, whatever, is because they don't believe. is because they don't believe anything's going to happen because you guys had the opportunity to appeal this ruling to be a more reasonable number. And nobody did it. Nobody pushed for it. There were there were towns who asked for 80 to 90% reduction. The town didn't. They asked for what? 10 or 15%? That's all I have. That's why time is up.
Thank you, Mark.
I see no more speakers, Mayor, if you'd like to close the public comment.
We'll close the public comment at this time and bring it back to council. Thank you. Those were quite a few and quite quite a number, quite a range of comments. Okay. Council members or planning commissioners, Cindy, I see your your hand up and Andy, let me start with you because you might be able to help guide the discussion at this point, which we have only half an hour left.
Thank you. I'll be brief. There's just three points and Ben, I might ask for your assistance here. So the EIR decision, the decision whether or not to go forward with the EIR is dependent on having a definitive project description by this December. That would be in order for our firm to be able to complete the full range of studies that are necessary. And I know that that was particularly an important point that Councilmember Kohler asked us about early on in the process, and I heard it mentioned a couple of times with the public comment. So as far as getting to that that list, getting to a list that every, all the decision makers can agree to, that's our, that's our goal is within, by the month of December. I also want to reiterate the November community workshop. That will be a workshop that is not structured similar to tonight's meeting. Instead, it'll be a Zoom meeting and there will be breakout rooms and it'll be very collaborative and there will be opportunities to engage in ways that are different than attending a council meeting. So I want to make that clear and we'll have more details going forward with that. And Ben, I was hoping you could discuss the appeal timeline because I, we did intend to touch on that. We just wanted to make sure that the public understands we won't get the the full answer until December. And meanwhile, there is a hearing upcoming that you'll be attending, correct, Ben?
Yes, that's scheduled for October 8th. And I will be attending that and making our position known and the letter that we wrote to HCDNA bag is listed on the town website and in the Fairfax speak. So we've stated our rationale and what we feel is a reasonable reduction.
And I just want to say how much I appreciate all the creative ideas that came up tonight. We took a lot of notes and we'll be folding a lot of these ideas back into policies that we bring forward to decision makers for review going forward. So thank you to all of the public that attended this evening and shared your comments. We look forward to continued conversations.
Thank you. Commissioner Swift, you have your hand up.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to speak to the maps in the staff report, Attachment C, which is your missing middle housing sites, including duplexes and quadplex options. I think any map that doesn't have streets on it isn't very useful. It's hard for me as a planning commissioner to look at these. It's doubly hard for the public at large. They can't look at this for one way in, one way out egress. And I think this map is pops up some other issues. When you look at it and you look at Portius, I mean, this map is based on duplex, quadplex, based on parcel size. So when I look at this map, I see the end of Portius. And a lot of the area of Portius that's identified for multi-unit housing in that missing middle. Portius is a street that I would say is 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 a one lane street. There's no sidewalks. There's cars parked along in front of houses. We need to look at something in addition to one way in, one way out when we look at areas of town for housing such as, such as what you've got on map C as well as parcel size. You know, I see if you had quadplexes in a lot of the areas in Deer Park. You know, I just think of what that would do to the neighborhood, the infrastructure. You've also got an area where there's likely no cell service. So there's a lot of things to consider when when we look at this. In your, in what your recommendations, what you wanted from this meeting, one of them was how to get more public engagement. And I think that's been discussed a little bit tonight. I don't think Fairfax Speaks is the tool that's going to provide that with 48 registered users. A lot of people have talked about having in-person meetings. I would suggest that staff look at going out to the neighborhoods and having neighborhood meetings. I don't know about, you know, you know, getting the whole town on the ball field, but I think our town is broken out into evacuation zones, which has usually neighborhood leaders, fire wise, whatever in them. We should be able to find creative ways to go out to those neighborhoods, discuss this in general, and then have them look at possibly what would be affecting their neighborhoods and be able to give you some feedback. Deer Park is a prime example that recently had a disaster preparedness meeting that they were able to do in person, bringing in representatives from, I think, police and fire and fire safety Marin. So it can be done. And I think it's far more effective to be able to go out in the neighborhoods and have neighborhood meetings and discuss this. I think you're going to get more and better feedback on that. And then as far as workforce housing, I know there's been discussion with staff about doing questionnaires, putting together a questionnaire and going out to the workforce, the folks that work in town and asking them questions about housing in town and and what they would see as their needs or able to move to town. I think that's key. And just a note, I think one of the speakers, the commenters mentioned the issue of when we went through Victory Village as a project and initially, you know, the thought was that that could be predominantly for Fairfax residents. That was in our housing element, our general plan. And as we went through that process, we came to understand that you could not limit who got that housing to Fairfax residents. So the seniors that you wanted to keep in town that wasn't available. I would suggest that when we look at workforce housing, workforce housing may be more of a determination of affordability than it is in limiting workforce to people that work in the town. So I think that needs to be clarified as well. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure which order the hands planned out, but I'm going to go to Commissioner Green. Thank you, Phil.
Okay, thank you. Please bear with me. My voice is a little rough tonight. As far as factors for analysis of potential housing sites, I've long been in favor of encouraging workforce housing. Ever since my son was in high school and I had a conversation with one of his terrific teachers and she said she had to commute from Vallejo and I couldn't believe it. Not that Vallejo is bad, but would be great if she especially, you know, was a great teacher, lived here in Fairfax. So there's, there's something factors for analysis of potential housing sites. I would say one of those factors, and I'm looking at odds and thinking through it a little bit, of course, I think we need to come up with similar designs for neighborhoods with similar designs. I'm thinking about the affordable housing that's on School Street at the end there where it just is just odd and sticks out like a sore thumb. It's great that it's there, but it didn't have to be designed that way. So I would like to see a design criteria where we're looking around, this happened in downtown San Rafael years ago. This was a design criteria that was supposedly legal at the time is can we possibly, you know, put up a quadruplex that looks like the surrounding housing so that it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb? And that's another way to incorporate middle, you know, missing middle housing is if it's okay with the neighbors, if it looks good to them in their neighborhood, it might not be too bad. You don't want to do a West Hollywood thing. And I think you all know what I mean by that. Ways to affirmatively further fair housing. I would like to have legal counsel come back to us with an opinion about the ability to restrict workforce, workforce housing to people who are working in Fairfax or maybe local San Anselmo or something, but at least local workforce housing doesn't make any sense to have someone who, you know, works in the city and lived in Vallejo and can now live here and work in the city. And you know, that's kind of not the idea. Housing sites list and map. Yeah, I think we should, I think that the list is a good list. I think the order that it's in is not too bad. I don't know why we're excluding certain properties really, which are so buildable and so good for potential housing and on main roads, et cetera. Strategies for encouraging the public. Anything you can possibly do. I mean, if we only have 10 over what? 100 people responding to the website, we have 7,500 in Fairfax and assuming you know, a good half of them are adults and can respond, we're missing a lot of people. Really missing a lot of people here. And I think we need to got the banner across the street, you know, you're doing everything you can. We've got 33 attendees tonight though, which is more than, you know, more, it's a huge chunk. And I don't know if any of them, you know, we could have asked them, I guess, if any of them are on the website or have signed up. But I think I don't know if the website's the best way to drag a lot of people there because you know what? We don't have a lot of millennials here who live here. We have a lot of them in college. We have a lot of them out there living in Paris, once they've seen, you know, Paris. And we don't have a lot of millennials here. Take a look at the people on the panel. You know, this is more or less typical here. Okay. And I'm no, I'm no spring chicken either. So getting me on a website, yeah, I did it. Getting anybody, but I'm, I'm, I come from Fortran in 1969. Okay, that's why I got on the website. So I don't know how you're going to encourage all the older fellows of my brothers and sisters in my age range, black, white, brown, everybody, we have them all here. How to get them all to respond? I don't know. I don't know. Just and the wonderful people who live here, we do have diversity. Thank goodness we have diversity. Okay, we want to keep that. But how do we encourage our workforce to come here? And how do we make it our workforce? Who tends to live here? Who can, who can do that? That's a legal question. I'm a lawyer. I know it's a legal question. I'd like to hear it from our legal counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. I also started with Fortran in 1969. I'm not sure whose hands were up next. Robert and Stephanie and I now see Chance. We've got a lot of comments here. Can I jump to Stephanie? But if you can try to keep it as brief as possible so others can speak and then I'll go to Robert and then to Chance.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. I would appreciate Ben or someone responding on that. We had multiple inquiries related to amnesty. I'm not sure we have anything on our town website or that we've communicated anything in the past couple of years on that. And then I thought you, I thought a historic building review or analysis was recently conducted as well. Could you please comment on those two items?
In terms of amnesty, the town has a program. My understanding from staff is that it's had limited participation without getting into too much speculation about the whys. You know, we could probably do a further analysis. In terms of historic, that's in the nascent stages. We have an architectural historian working with the objective design and development standards work and has done some preliminary items. It's more oriented towards the potential for historic character as much as we want to use that word and not necessarily designation of individual buildings.
I said, you said not necessarily individual buildings. Is that what you said?
Right, because that's a separate process where you're, you know, doing forms, filling out forms and looking at the criteria for historic designation. This, I think, is more just looking at the style and aesthetics and the historic development of the town and making sure that as we go into objective design and development standards, that that reflects that continuity of, of, I'm just going to say, character in our, in our physical environment.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, Commissioner Johnson, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I come on. Yeah, I want to share an observation, listening to all the public comments. I realized they, the comments come from on a separate, separate topic. So part of them are policy oriented. Part of them are in relation to the maps or the sites. Part of them are to the architecture or what it looks like. And what that tells me is that somehow it is not entirely clear that all those components are being worked on. So I know they are in progress. And so I think what would be probably useful to do is to have a very simple, very clear, like an executive summary, a list of all those things together. So that means how we're addressing an amnesty program as a policy item, or how we are addressing certain parcels, or how we are addressing the architectural aspect of it. And with that list, probably also if you're not doing things, why we're not doing them. All that condensed in a single soundbite communication, I think that would both inform the public very well and probably also easier solicit them to have input if they don't agree with a certain part, with understanding all the other components. So that's, it's just an observation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chance?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to circle back to my final point real quick, which is regarding outreach. I feel like a lot of the comments that we receive from the public and some of the comments on social media, of course, there, there are people who are, you know, surprised that they they weren't paying attention to the process or the fact that, you know, y'all have done a great job of going to various subcommittees and advisory commissions and committees in town, which are also public meetings that folks can attend if they're interested in looking at this from any particular angle. But um, yeah, I'm just, I was struck by the, by the lack of signups, registrants on the website. And I was thinking back to the November election and the different ways that, you know, we pull out all the stops when we're in the middle of an electoral process and then we, we don't seem to implement those same types of things as governments or look to those things when we're trying to engage folks for other massive planning processes. And I, I don't know what the budget is, but I definitely want to encourage y'all to think about doing like direct mailers to folks. If, if there's a way to collaborate with the Fairfax volunteers and to do the door hanger type thing, I think that's a very personal touch. It could have a bit of information. It doesn't have to be something that's shocking that gets, you know, like the story poll idea, which I appreciated still because I, that, you know, the marketing stuff is just as important as the actual content as far as getting people to a website or something like that. But you know, something that's more informative than the banner that just says, you know, Q and A about the housing element. Well, there might be people driving through town who have no idea what a housing element even is to begin with. But if there's an opportunity to do direct mailer, door hanger, get volunteers to put those things out in different neighborhoods. You have the QR code, you have a URL that says where people can go. You have a phone number and an email to use all the different ways of outreach to Commissioner Green's point. I feel like that is, like, we have to pull out all the stops. We can't just expect like a hundred people to sign up and then like say, well, well, I don't know. I think we really need to make a, a much more concerted effort. And that's, that's like the, the primary thing I feel like coming out of tonight. I think there's some great suggestions about, you know, individual sites that are specific to those different opportunity sites that y'all have put together on that list. But, you know, I think just getting more eyes on this and getting more opinions involved and that, that's really what, what's apparent for me coming out of tonight. And happy to, happy to speak offline about that. But again, I think Fairfax volunteers would be an interesting collaboration on that type of project to just get the word out. And I wanted to also center or amplify Commissioner Swift's point about like neighborhood specific engagement. I really like that idea. And I I hope in addition to the November workshop, that there are opportunities to do more site-specific engagement. I know bandwidth is super thin and appreciate all y'all are doing already, but just a couple of thoughts from me right now. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mimi?
Thank you, Mayor Ackerman. I'll try and be quick. I think I could probably take another three hours to express my thoughts on these issues. I think initially the numbers in the table for the potential units at some of these sites is a bit shocking to the system. Just in terms of imagining that number of units on a particular property that, that can be just a little jarring, frankly. I think the idea of affordability by design and relying on affordability by design, you know, the dangers of that are exactly, you know, expressed with, you know, the idea that Mr. Assazi would be, you know, building that many units when we know when he came to us that he refused to agree to affordability. And so instead of build, 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 I would like to see our mantra be affordability, affordability, affordability. And, you know, we overachieved on the lower income level numbers of the last reindeer cycle. And I still am not clear whether we got credit for overachieving on the lower numbers when we still had higher income units to meet during that last cycle. And I frankly am much more interested in making many more units at the very low income levels. And if you look at what those median, Marin, median average, whatever the median income are, the very low income and the low income are incredibly high. So from my perspective, I think I, you know, I understand the whole idea of missing middle housing. But frankly, I just want to focus on very low income affordable. And I don't want to rely on affordability by design because I don't want to see some two hundred square foot rental unit have no boundaries on how high somebody can charge for that property, except by design. I think we have to mandate affordability somehow. And I'll get off my high horse. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Okay, Councilmember Goddard, and we're, we have very little time left.
Yeah, thank you, Mimi. I, I, I echo about the, about the affordability. That was what I was going to speak to, but you spoke it very, very well. I just want to make sure that we don't preclude looking at an inclusionary zoning ordinance as we move forward. Because as we speak about this, without that, I know of one property right now that's actually being sold to a developer when it could have been an opportunity site for something for that, that would create a far more, increase our inventory of affordable housing significantly. We have no inclusionary zoning, so I think it has to happen in tandem here. The other piece is that, and I can't remember who spoke, I think two speakers spoke about the, about looking at short-term rentals policy, which we've also had on the table for nearly a decade. That, that is another incredibly important piece for us to look at. And as we're walking door to door or we're doing the outreach that lots of creative people have spoken about tonight, we, we need, we do need to start, to start looking and understanding what's going on in terms of the numbers, which are massive of people who are using their potential living spaces, affordable living spaces for short-term rentals. So I would request that we explore somehow bringing that through the planning commission back to council and making sure we grab as much affordability as we can out of this process. So thank you.
Thank you. So I, it's, it's time to wrap this meeting up. And I just wanted to wanted to say for myself, first of all, that I think tonight's meeting was very productive. We had very helpful presentations. Keep in mind that these present, the presentation was of the very initial graphs of some of these possibilities. And so this is, this is just something to, this isn't something to look at the numbers right now. That process is what we're really beginning tonight. And that I wanted to express that with regard to the participation thus far on the Fairfax Speaks website. The number of, of hits on the website is pretty high. And so what I'm seeing, I could be wrong, but what I'm seeing with that is that at this point, up until now, there hasn't been as much to actually interact in a meaningful way with. And that's what tonight has been about is introducing, really getting down to the brass tacks of, you know, not just our general feelings about housing or, or whatever, but really getting down to, okay, where, where can we put it and where does this fit? So I do think that the balancing act is an intriguing software approach and really puts everyone in a position of, you know, what's it feel like to have to actually figure this out? So a good approach. It'll be very interesting to see what comes out of that. And there are two bodies here, the Planning Commission and Town Council will have plenty more opportunities to engage with this process. So this is only the beginning. There's and yeah, I think that's, unless there's anything that anybody else would like to add here at the, at the last, I think we can call this a good meeting for tonight.
Thank everybody for their participation. Really helpful. We've got a wealth of items to work on. And we will, you will see that reflected in meetings coming up. So and what we put on the website. And Mayor, I agree with your assessment. I think we're going to give people some really meaty topics to chew on at that site. So look forward to that.
Okay. And thank you, Andy. Thank you all. I just want to express my, my appreciation for all of you on the planning commission. We've, you've gotten a lot of stuff thrown in your laps and as well, as have we on the council. But thank you very much for your, for your service and we'll look forward to more. Barbara? Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
So we will adjourn this meeting. And for the public, we are now about, we'll adjourn this meeting. And council members will then sign on to a different Zoom link. And that'll be for the hopefully pretty brief special meeting that we will have to just consider two consent calendar items. See you in a minute. Thank you.